Everybody here. Anybody?
Uh, let's see.
Majority.
Getting in.
Yeah.
Break after my meeting. And then I can get my nose and take my mask off.
Six.
I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Human Services. If everyone would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Here.
Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Van den Bosch.
Here.
Commissioner Beeden.
Present. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
At least I'd make the motion to move the Health Department's discussion to 7AA. We'll do that first.
Support. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We do have quite a few citizens wishing to be heard this evening, so we'll go ahead and get started. The clerk, will you please read those that want to be entered into the record?
The first one is a letter from Dr. Merkentot. Dear Commissioner, Dear Chairman Bohm, Commissioners Baldwin, Beeden, Dunn, McConnell, Rushing, and Van den Bosch. This letter is to clarify the circumstances and reasoning that prompted the St. Clair County Health Department mask order on December 29th, 2021. Data will not be presented here but was supportive of this order and is publicly available on our website as well as MDHHS and CDC websites. Specific data extractions may also be requested depending on the availability and reliability of such data requests. With that said, I will begin by stating that past case counts, infection rates, et cetera, were not part of this particular decision-making process. Instead, it was the highly concerning implications of the Omicron variant circulating in our community. We are also basing our discussion on the premise, on the premises that, one, masks are a safe and effective mechanism for reducing viral transmission; and, two, the disease is serious enough to warrant public health intervention. The reality on these two matters has been formally established in the medical and scientific community. This discussion is also based on a very important consideration: that the health and safety of our children should be a primary concern of our community. In particular, the benefits of in-person learning are well-known, and most will agree that it is highly desirable to avoid school pauses in virtual learning as much as possible for the sake of our children's well-being. Our use of a public health order was a last resort to mitigate the harm of the impending Omicron surge and to protect our children. Previous and recent use of strong recommendations did not prompt many students or schools to use face coverings. During winter break, students traveled, socialized, and congregated for several weeks without masks or other mitigation layers in place. At the same time, careful review of regional U.S. and global impacts of Omicron indicated that St. Clair County was highly likely to experience a rapid surge in cases in January on top of an already high level of transmission from the Delta variant. This is, in effect, in fact, occurring now as we speak. Statistical modeling and reports from highly reputable experts warned that this surge would result in rapid and exponential increases in cases with the probable rise in hospitalizations despite having a more benign clinical presentation for many people.
You have about 20 seconds.
Unvaccinated individuals and those...
We're gonna ask...
I gave her my time.
We're, we're gonna ask that the crowd remain respectful. There's a lot of, of people talking tonight, and we want to make sure that we hear everyone. So please keep the applause or the nays at bay until the, the very, very end so that we can get through this tonight.
Unvaccinated individuals and those with other health issues will still be at significant risk for severe illness and even death. Implementing increased prevention strategies in schools would not be effective after the virus was rampant. Any actions that could be effective needed to be done on the first day kids returned to class. The county government office closures on December 30th and 31st required an order to be released prior to the end of our last business day on December 29th. The difficult decision to issue the order was made earlier on that same day. There are several factors about Omicron variant that raises this level of concern. Vaccine and natural immunity appear to be less protective. It does not respond well to two of the three monoclonal antibody products currently available, and it is much more contagious than the other variants, meaning that more people will get sick at the same time. So, trovam, I'm, I am, the monoclonal that is effective is in short supply statewide, as are the new antivirals. Other resources that are limited at this time are testing supplies and human resources in our hospitals and healthcare facilities, meaning early diagnosis and effective treatment will be constrained. Vaccination, particularly after a booster dose, significantly reduces the risk of hospitalization and deaths, even from Omicron. However, our community at large has at, is a 50.4 completed vaccination rate, and in school aged children, 21.4%. Vaccines are still our strongest protective factor for this virus, but St. Clair County is poorly prepared in this way. Additionally, we have an influenza wave that will be here soon. In short, we have the scenario for a perfect storm for adverse outcomes as a result of the Omicron variant. A final component to consider is the issue of masking and quarantine in our schools. Current guidance allows for fully masked students as well as fully vaccinated individuals to continue attending class in person after exposure with added precautions. Without a mandatory masking policy, most will not opt to use a face covering, and as a result, a single ma, a single case could result in many exposures that require stay-home quarantines. Consider what this would look like with the coming surge where we can easily expect high rates of new cases in every school, every day. Without a mask mandate, it is highly likely that our school would have to go virtual very quickly. It should be everybody's goal to keep our children in school. Public health authority in St. Clair County has always been utilized sparingly and thoughtfully. Good medical and scientific information should be the primary basis for, for these decisions, not politics and public opinion, especially when it comes to our children's health. There is clearly room for improvements in intergovernmental communication and process. However, when lives are at stake, there is often little time to gather consensus. Public health decisions are best left to public health professionals, particularly in this complex and rapidly changing pandemic. I respect everyone's opinion, but after careful consideration, I ultimately have to do what I believe to be the right thing for our children and our community. It is my legal, professional, and moral obligation to make decisions regarding the health and safety of our community, particularly the welfare of our children who rely on us to protect them. Standing by and waiting for the chips to fall should be an unacceptable action from a public health official, and is contrary to my nature. The second one is from Kevin Miller. Dear St. Clair County Commissioners, I'm writing to, I'm writing to you regarding the mask mandate issued by Dr. Merkentot. I would ask that we put aside the politics of whether we believe the government should mandate or the politics of whether masks are an effective way to reduce the spread of COVID. Instead, let's focus on the mask mandate's impact on schools. Throughout the pandemic, when a school district is notified of a student or staff member testing positive for COVID, the district has responded, responded by quarantining, isolating anyone in close contact with the person who tested positive. Universal masking is an important tool strategy to avoid mask quarantines. One thing we hope everyone can agree on is this: Parents want their children in school with their teacher in the classroom. Students want to be in their classroom with the teacher and other students. As educators, we know the best education is when students are face-to-face with their teachers in the classroom. Putting aside the politics, the mask mandate for schools gives us the best chance to keep our kids in a face-to-face classroom setting with their teachers. Universal masking enables us to keep students in school even when they have a close contact with someone in school or at home who tests positive. School masking significantly reduces the length of any potential quarantine. Another issue for school districts throughout the pandemic has been the ability to adequately staff buildings. In an unmasked school, if a staff member tests positive for COVID, every staff member who has been a close contact with that person should be isolated, quarantined for several days. As with our students, when all students are masked, the likelihood and duration of any quarantine or isolation is substantially reduced or eliminated. In a school district with universal masking, the staff member who tests positive is isolated, but everyone else may continue to work. We've had dozens of school days impacted by COVID in an unmasked setting where we've not been able to staff buses, lunchrooms, classrooms, et cetera, due to the isolation of people who were close contacts with someone who tested positive. With universal masking in schools, our ability to keep our schools open for in-person learning is greatly increased. In the absence of universal masking in schools, dozens of school districts have already made the decision to revert to virtual learning, either due to the number of student cases in close contacts or staff cases in close contacts. We don't want that for our students. Throughout the pandemic, Dr. Merkentot has worked closely with our educational leaders, and we've collaborated on a myriad of COVID-related decisions. Her concern has always been locked up with ours doing whatever it takes to allow all of our children to be with their teachers in school. I hope we can all agree on that. The third one is from a Ruth Haveluski. Dear County Commissioner, my name is Ruth Haveluski and a resident of St. Clair County. I support Dr. Merkentot's mask mandate for schools. This is necessary to slow down the spread of COVID. To keep schools open, mask mandates are necessary. This is a temporary measure until the COVID numbers go down to an acceptable level. If parents do not want their children to wear masks, the children can attend school virtually. The public health laws are to protect everyone. Minority uninformed, noisy citizens do not have the right to dictate public health policy. I have attended Commissioner meetings in the past. I will not be attending the January 6th meeting due to the potential COVID spreader and...
Please keep it down.
...and disrespect that I encountered from the COVID deniers. Thank you for your time, Ruth Haveluski. The final is from Susan Amato. Dear County Commission, it is with great disappointment that I learned there will again be before you the request to terminate Dr. Annette Merkentot. As a faithful leader, following the science to get us through the pandemic with the least amount of disease and death, our community depends on her leadership. A current percent positivity rate of 30% is truly alarming, and every appropriate mitigation method, including thorough and consistent masking, is necessary. Our students do not need to be in school and cannot do so safely without masking up. Teachers and students deserve to work in a safe environment with everyone doing their part to keep it that way. I implore you to not vote in favor of Dr. Merkentot's termination. Our community depends on her expert and unwavering commitment to our health. Thank you sincerely, Susan Amato.
Thank you. We'll move on to citizens wishing to be heard in the room. First up is Adam Blair.
So, um, what do I do here?
You, you have three minutes to address the Commissioners at the podium.
Can I yield to somebody else that needs my time? At this time, or can I not?
Nah, go ahead. We've let people do it in the past, why not? I got nothing but time.
So, you'll, we'll put you in the queue for the next... You just let me know I've got yours set aside. You let me know when you want to yield.
Thank you.
Yep. Neil Bryan.
Ready to come up there?
Yes, please.
Good evening, everybody. Bear with me, I'm not used to speaking in front of this many people. First of all, my name is Neil Bryan. I'm out of Riley Township. Proud father of four, grown up five children. And I came here because I'm passionate about what's going on in my child's school. Trying to make this quickly as possible, I know I have three minutes here. When I first heard about this, I followed the school instructions, called the Health Department. First question was, why is this happening? Who is this protecting? Person I spoke with said it's protecting the staff and the children. We've been dealing with this for two and a half, three years now, going on the third year, or starting our third year. And at first, it was about the staff, I understood. I was the first one to wear a mask when we didn't know what this was. I said, wasn't, isn't the staff vaccinated? Yes, but what about those unvaccinated? I said, what about the staffs unvaccinated? Isn't that the decision to be unvaccinated? Yes, it is. What about the children? Just yesterday, um, public health official, top one of Chicago, stated publicly, this is no more, statistically speaking, dangerous than the flu. Look it up. Mainstream media last night. Second thing I wanted to address. Today, I'm having a really hard time understanding how, and I'm not, I'm looking to make sense of this to everybody, okay? Less about quoting stats, unhealthiness of masks. I, I actually asked the doctor today on the live stream on Facebook, what is the reason that my children, and you're making a decision for my children, I worded it different ways, hopefully she'd answer, and she did answer this. What is the reason that the least vulnerable people in this, in our population, are being forced to wear masks in school, being our kids? And the most vulnerable people, if you're a public health official, interested in public health, I guess that's us, adults, are not being mandated. Now, I'm not for that, but if she is, in my opinion, interested in health, the first people you would address are those maybe my age and older, okay? Now, and her answer was, well, it's for the kids and their health, just like we've all been hearing, but for adults, it's their choice. What makes my kids have no choice and all of us have a choice, which we deserve to have a choice, okay? So, I'm, I'm sitting here trying to digest this. This is from her mouth tonight. And I'm thinking, okay, um, this is... Sorry, a little scrambled here. I also called the pediatrician, and I recorded half of it, but then I'm not going to go there, talk about it. I asked her if, if I was to come in there, there was a medical exemption, yada, yada, yada. I heard some hearsay, I wanted to verify that. She stated that someone higher up than her doctor instructed her to not grant those. Okay, that's the big issue I got right now, too, okay?
You got about 20 seconds.
Okay, sorry about that. Bottom line, if you're okay with this, I would expect, I would expect nothing less than every single one of us adults, and if you're supporting this, to wear a mask for seven hours a day, because we're at higher, higher risk than our children. If you support this, you should be supporting masks for all adults in St. Clair County, whether right or not. If not, if you're unwilling to wear a mask for at least seven hours a day with a 35-minute total break in your office, at your desk, every single day, without a choice to leave for lunch or go to your house...
Please wrap it up.
Then, if, if you're not willing to do that yourself, which many of us, apparently, we're all allowed to really do that, then there's no way you should not revoke what's going on with our kids right now.
Carolyn Richards.
Hi. Just one second here, I just have to get something ready. Okay. Yes, I'm putting a mask on, because I'm, you'll find out in a few minutes. Hi. Thank you all for being here this evening. This is a wonderful turnout. You may be wondering why I'm wearing this mask, if I'm here to speak out against the mask, or against masking of our kids. You'll see why, soon. I know we've all heard of the revised school code, Act 451 of 1976, especially over this past year. So I will just reiterate the three prohibited practices that relates to this current situation. Section 1307B, the state policy under section 1307A, oops. Shall include a clear statement that all of the following practices are prohibited for school personnel in the public schools of the state under all circumstances, including emergency situations. The deprivation of basic needs, oxygen. The intentional application of any noxious substance or stimulus that results in physical pain or extreme discomfort. A noxious substance or stimulus is prohibited, whether it is generally acknowledged or is specific to the pupil. Or any restraint that negatively impacts breathing. So this is our current situation. An unelected employee of our county that makes nearly $200,000 a year, either paid in full or in part with our tax dollars, is forcing school districts to perform these prohibited practices on our children. Yet, this said employee has failed to show the data and outcomes of her mitigation strategies when asked. The state of Michigan released data a couple weeks ago stating that schools with mask mandates have similar COVID case rates as schools with no mandates. This, there was also a study published before COVID that collected literature from 1946 to 2018 that showed that there was no significant reduction in influenza transmission with the use of face masks. Cloth masks have pore sizes ranging from 80 to 500 microns. Pretty small. The diameter of the SARS-CoV-2 virus is one micron. So the largest possible small droplet in our aerosols that can carry a SARS-CoV virus is 62 microns. So that means the largest droplet can still pass through the masks, both cloth ma, cloth masks and surgical masks.
You have about 20 seconds.
Thank you.
What is your name? I'm sorry, one more time? Thank you.
So, here's a quick mini education. So, picture, we inhale oxygen through our nose and mouth, the oxygen goes into our lungs, several mechanisms cause the oxygen to get into our bloodstream. Carbon dioxide is the waste product of cellular metabolism that we exhale through our mouth and nose. Common sense, when those openings are covered, oxygen and carbon dioxide do not flow freely, right? When you add an increased temperatures, this further affects the CO2. So, that's carbon dioxide. So, I'm going to demonstrate the measurement of the CO2 level that builds up when these masks are held, or under the masks with this CO2. It's a handheld CO2 monitor. So, actually, the alarm is supposed to set when it goes over 1,000. I'll tell you why in a second here. All right, well, I'm waiting for that to reset. So, 400 to 1,000 parts per million is the typical level found in an occupied space with good air exchange. Probably a little bit higher in here because we have an increased CO2 exhale. 1,000 to 2,000 parts per million is the level associated with complaints of headache, fatigue, poor concentration. It's already starting at 12:45, so I'm going to see what it's doing under the mask here. So, 1,000 to 2,000 has all of those symptoms, poor memory, confusion, disorientation, headache, fatigue, and poor concentration, like I said. Over 2,000 parts per million, there's more severe adverse health effects expected. Now, for CO2 exposure limits...
You're going to come up and tell me what it says on here?
2811, okay, now 3071.
Okay. So, we're going to keep it here because this is normal, like wearing a mask for a kid in school, right? So, the EPA, which is the Environment Protection Agency, suggests maximum concentration of CO2 of 1,000 parts per million for continuous exposure, based on studies that showed cognitive impairment and sick building syndrome, which includes an array of symptoms that become chronic in people working indoors with CO2 levels above 1,000 parts per million. So, this is less than, what, 10 seconds, 30 seconds? OSHA guidelines, they have their guidelines of five eight-hour workdays, no more than 5,000 parts per million cumulative. We're really asking that you give each district their choice. Give parents their choice and decide what's best for their child. If you choose to wear a mask, or homeschool your child, or put a mask on your child, that's your decision.
About 20 seconds, please.
We are their parents, and we know what's best for our children. We do not co-parent with the government. Thank you.
Sheri Chandler? Sheri Chandler? Jeff Chandler? Jeff Chandler? Kim Har Top? Or Top? Thank you. I'm going to get a lesson in last names tonight, I just know it. Maybe?
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak. I usually don't write anything down, so I'm kind of just going off the top of my head. I keep hearing face-to-face, well, I can't see your face, I can't see your face. These kids need to see faces. Now, I'm hearing, I'm going to speak for a beautiful little lady, Jade, over there. She's a little too shy to speak, but she's kind of tired of these breathing breaks. We get breathing breaks now at school. Didn't God give us breath? At a couple of the other meetings, I had brought up the U.S. Code 18101, Title 18, the crimes and criminal procedure, and one was making false fictitious or fraudulent statements or representations, or makes or uses any false writing or document knowing the same to contain any materially false, fictitious, or fraud. And it also said, and that was for an executive branch, and under section 233, the term domestic terrorism, that means that domestic terrorism means activities that appear to be intended to intimidate or coerce a civilian population. Well, it was already determined she made false letters, she didn't have a quarantine place. It's false. What are we doing? Now, we're here again, fighting for our kids to breathe, to get a good education, right? We want our kids to have a good education. They're not getting a good education right now. They're getting tossed back and forth like little diseased cattle. This is what we're treating our kids like. Well, I'm not treating the kids like it, and I keep hearing our kids, Dr. Mercantant, our kids, my kid, her kid, his kid, her kid. They're not hers, they're mine. She owns them, she owns them. The government doesn't own our children, and we're really, really, really tired of this going back and forth, and these threats, and intimidation, which is domestic terrorism from an executive branch. We need to do something about this before it gets way too bad with our kids. And Mr. Fletcher, I have a question. I don't know if you have a Blacks Law Dictionary, but you might want to look up on the 11th edition what mandate is in the Black Law Dictionary. And this is kind of off-topic, but I'm having an issue with my city, which is Yale.
About 20 seconds.
Okay. They are sending threatening letters to shut off my water because I will not comply to have a smart meter installed in my house, in my basement, under my daughter's bed. I have a lot of health concerns about that. They gave me 30 days to put it in, and I will not comply, and they will shut my water off in the dead of winter, and my water runs my heat.
Please wrap it up.
So, they just want to kill me, basically. Thank you.
Mary Platt? Mary Platt? Nicole? Mm-hmm. DeGanst? Thank you.
First and foremost, I want to thank you all for your service, and to our community and county. These are trying times that make your job even more difficult. I wear several hats in my community, in which I live and work. I'm a dedicated teacher for the past 17 years. I'm an alumni to that school, and a community member. Most importantly, I am the mother and stepmother to four children, three currently enrolled at the high school. I stand here as a mother. I'm beyond disheartened and discouraged with the decisions to bring back the mask mandates. These draconian mandates infringe on our freedoms, our life, our liberty, and our pursuit of happiness. My children hate going to school, and mind you, my kids are straight A students, all three of them at the high school. They come home tired, lethargic, dehydrated, they have chronic sore throats, my one child is on her second dose of antibiotics in the last month from bacterial throat infections. They're sad. They hate even more virtual education. I believe families should be given a choice, choice to wear a mask or not, choice to be virtual or not, choice to raise our children as we see fit without government, schools, or the Health Department dictating that for parents. I ask that you listen to your community, groups of parents, and give back our freedoms. I'm sad for my children that I can't parent them the way that I see fit, the way that they need from me. I don't want my children in a mask. I don't want them, I want them in school, I want them socializing, I want them being with their peers. Now, I talk to you as a fifth-grade teacher. Last year was the worst year ever to be a teacher. Do you know what it's like to not be able to see a child smile, or for them to not see their teacher smile at them? It's horrible. Children look to adults for facial expressions for reassurance and guidance, and teachers back at their students. It is a way to let a child know that maybe you don't like their behavior, or hey, you're doing a good job. It's a way to tell how a kid's day is going and address any issues they may be having. It's a way to check in on them when they're working, engaging their facial expressions and demeanor. Before the mask mandate, it was a parental choice. Out of the 54 students I have, two would wear a mask somewhat consistently. My partner...
About 20 seconds, please.
Can somebody yield to me? Thank you. My partner teacher...
What was, who yielded? Thank you.
My partner teacher's here, and she would attest to this, that out of those kids that we teach, maybe one of those was wearing it for a COVID reason. The other child that wears a mask consistently wears it because she doesn't want people to see her face. How heartbreaking is that? Have you ever seen a child's mask at the end of the day? It's filthy, it's covered with snot, food, lord knows where it's been throughout the day. It's worse than most people's underwear. Thirdly, I speak to you as a taxpayer, community member. I ask that you do whatever is in your power to make these mandates never happen again. The Health Department should give facts and recommendations. And as I was standing here, I was thinking of a couple things, you know, and I'm sure many parents in here could attest to this, I ask my kids to clean their room, and I don't expect a half-assed job. And my kids know that, and I really feel like these mask mandates in school alone is kind of half-assed. And that's unacceptable, and that should be unacceptable to you, and I hope that you express those concerns. So, thank you for listening to me. I'm a dedicated teacher, I'm a dedicated community member. It has been my life's greatest pleasure to serve my community, and I will continue to do that, but I sure the hell hope it's not with a mask on. Thank you.
Kim Van Bock? Kim Van Bock?
Thank you, everyone, for being here to give me hope, and my family hope. Thank you for your service. Thank you for allowing me to speak as well. First off, let's start with how this mandate came down on us. It was dropped at 4:30 PM, Wednesday, December 29th. Boom, everything closed for the New Year's holiday. There's one word for that action, it's cowardly. We've all submitted hundreds of studies showing that masks don't work, and yet, here we stand. The data is not peer-reviewed. I'm sorry, it's fake, phony, and false. We're not utilizing science here, rather utilizing our kids as pawns in this. A mask, the mask mandate is only for our kids when they're in school. As soon as the sound of the end-of-the-day bell is heard, mask are off. Woo-hoo! You know extracurricular activities, we get to not have masks on. Doesn't make any sense. There will always be viruses. You can't teach people to walk around in fear. Not one single scientist or virologist has isolated this virus. Hence, it's just a virus. Folks, it's all about freedom, freedom of choice. If you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. If you don't, don't. Everyone knows how to get that shot. If you want to get it, get it. If you don't, don't. We choose how to protect our families. We choose. The Health Department said that, as was, I don't remember her name, the one with the carbon thing, with breathing, showing how... Thank you. That how, they said that it was no big deal for the kids to wear a mask while in school, that it wasn't harmful. Well, she just proved right there how harmful it really is. Wearing a mask only exasperates, you know, if you have asthma, if you have migraines, and I know for a fact. And then, not to mention, this really bothers me as well, the overly rising rate of the youth suicide and drug abuse that is correlated to these mandates. It shows but lack of concern the Health Department has towards our youth and their mental health. They know this rising number, but still yet to choose another mandate. I guess their lives and their mental health are not that important. This tyranny has to stop, guys. We need to, you guys need to come together and make a vote. We need to vote, it needs to happen. We need to get our kids back in school without any mandates. Thank you.
Lindsay Chop? Lindsay Chop?
All right, good evening, Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you guys tonight, and everyone. I oppose the recent mask mandate and question the timing and the target population. From the beginning of the school year, the district my three kiddos attend has had successful in-person learning, and masks have remained optional. We've been to Ford Field, the Pediatrics Office, the dentist, Sky Zone Bowling Grocery Store, the movies, the list goes on, all without wearing a mask, and surrounded by hundreds, sometimes thousands of people. Some wearing masks, some weren't, there was a choice. Now, suddenly, just hours before offices were shut down for the New Year's holiday, notice trickles down of a new public health order affecting only our children. So, I emailed Dr. Mercantant earlier this week, and I forwarded that email correspondence to all of you yesterday. I brought up a few points and questions. Why the sudden urgency? Why if our county was in such dire need of the mask mandate was the mandate only placed on our school system and our children? Why target children who are the least susceptible to this virus? As you can all read, she spoke to none of my points and answered none of my questions. Vaccines are readily available to school-aged children and adults. People are free to choose to wear a mask or not. It is disgusting that she is targeting our children. Children are not responsible for an adult's safety, lifestyle choices, or ego. She needs to stop treating them like they are. My husband and I have the final say in our children's health, along with the medical advice from our pediatrician, whom has treated my children since birth. The county health director should not have a say in my child's health plan, and it needs to stop today. When you guys think about your actions moving forward tonight, whether that be forcing her to rescind that mandate, removing her from office, or censoring her in some point or at some form, just remember, you all had the choice tonight to wear a mask or not. She has taken that choice away from me as a parent if I want my child to attend the school, my taxes support, and to be able to receive the best educational experience for them. Is she really who we want representing our county? Is this truly the best that we can do for our children? Thank you.
Courtney Palmetier? Courtney Palmetier? Okay. Andrea Gilbo? Amanda Spears? Lauren Martin? Lincoln Brassfield?
Thank you for allowing me to... Thank you for allowing me to speak, and my name is Lincoln Brassfield. I am 10 years old, and I'm in fifth grade at El Gonca Elementary, and the CO2 trapped inside of, well, the carbon dioxide trapped inside of the masks is bad for the, is bad for the human body. It, as the lady with the carbon dioxide reader said, it is very bad for the body, and there's not enough oxygen going to the brain from the masks there, and they're making, and a low possibility, but kids could pass out from it, and it lowers focus for kids and everything, and it makes them sleepy because there's not enough oxygen. And when you're sleepy, you're not learning, and if you're not learning, you can fail. And the teacher, and with the masks on, the kids can't hear the teacher... And the teacher, and with the masks on, the kids can't hear the teachers, and when the teachers have to yell, it, it, uh, it makes, well, it, oh, god.
Lindsay, Lindsay, you're not going to get cut off, take all the time you want.
Okay, yeah. And the teachers can't hear the students either when their voices are muffled, and it, they have to yell, and it can give sore throat, and it isn't good for kids to have to yell because they get sore throats. And the masks don't work because the, the, uh, the threads between the masks are bigger than the COVID virus, and they pass right through. So the masks don't work. And in 2015, uh, god, I forget his name, but he signed off on a thing called COVID-19 where nobody knew what it was. It wasn't even a thing at the time. And I don't understand, well, like, uh, Yeah.
You're doing great.
But I want to know, I heard that the room downstairs was not requested to be open. I don't know what it takes to get that room open. I'm handicapped, and I know we could start threatening a handicap issue, but when you don't have a seat, there's something wrong with that. I understand, but my point is, we've got 50, 60 people standing, we've got another 20 or so downstairs, and they got a room to hold 100 people with closed-circuit TV. Can somebody give me one good reason why we cannot have that room open?
Do you want to go open it?
We did not, we didn't do the overflow room this time because it requires double the staffing, and every time we've utilized it in the past and have asked the people in the room that were over capacity to go downstairs, people refused to leave. So instead of staffing two empty rooms, we staffed one full.
Well, right now, we got a four-room plus almost a four-room down there. And I'm just saying, you know, I understand that when things happen, we got to make decisions, but when you got 90 people standing and they could be sitting, especially me, I'm just, I'm just asking for a good reason why.
Because in the past, it wasn't utilized.
See, I'm not asking about the past, I'm asking about tonight. Now, I know that we talked, we talked to the sheriff, somebody called Port Huron Police.
Yeah, the kid who's got the keys.
I just don't understand.
We don't have IT staff, we would have to call them, and we can adjourn and have IT, call IT staff-
No, we're not going to adjourn, but I'm saying if people want to sit downstairs-
But we can't stream it without IT staff setting it up.
We don't have the ability to stream or anything.
We don't have the ability to turn it on. So if we are over capacity, we should adjourn the meeting until we can find a suitable-
I'm not going to adjourn. Can you, can you, can you, can you take a seat so we can carry on?
Well, I'm just saying, I know, I know that we've had probably 20 people go home already, and I'm just saying, when you got this many people that are concerned citizens, to me, the excuse I heard was very, very weak. Yes, I'll sit down because I need to, I thought about going out to my car and getting my cooler, but that's, that's an excuse.
Can we get, can we get going again, please?
So thank you for bringing that to our attention, sir. We will do better at our next meeting. We appreciate you bringing that forward. Mary Powell?
Hi, everyone. I'm going to read two things. Symptoms A: fever or chills, cough, body aches, headache, sore throat, congestion, runny nose. Symptoms B: Headache, fever, sore throat, body aches, sneezing, runny nose, cough. Symptom A: this new Omicron. Symptom B: NyQuil. I hope you all had a nice holiday and a happy new year, because mine was ruined just before the new year, when I received notice that our health department sent out a mandate just before the office closed. First, this is getting really old. Sending it out when the office is closing shows how they cannot handle the backlash that they knew was coming. But here we go again, masking all the children in St. Clair County. Why? Where's her scientific proof? Because on Monday, there were reports released from experts and scientists stating cloth masks don't work. Surprise, surprise. They provide very little to no protection, and that the only mask that seemed to provide any kind of protection from this novel virus is the N95, and that's because they have to be properly fitted. And the CDC states that children and men with beards, sorry, guys, can't wear N95 masks because they cannot be properly fitted. So here's my question to commissioners and our health department who decided not to show tonight. Now that they're mandated, are you willing to take some of that pandemic response money our county and health department received to purchase properly fitting masks that are approved by the CDC for every single child in St. Clair County? And that means that you provide two or three because they need to change them periodically through the day. And seeing my kindergarten's mask, you might make it 10. Since she wants to mandate it again, then she can provide them all. I doubt she will, especially seeing that she doesn't listen to anybody but herself. Now, I've been doing some research, something I'm really good at. We have 83 counties in this beautiful state. I personally went through every health department's websites, and if I could not find anything on their website, I called them.
You have about 20 seconds.
83 counties. Seven, seven have health departments who mandated masks. That's 8% of our counties. Some even directed you to the state's mask advisement. Yeah, I know, most are putting it on the school districts to make that decision, which I find highly wrong. But data released by the state on December 17th reported that transmission was the same in schools that had mandates of masks and schools without. Some transmission rates truly do provide, prove that masks don't work. In closing, I would like to know where in the Constitution that it states that one person and only one person can make health decisions for every single person in that county. Who does not know everyone's medical history or conditions? Because I don't recall ever seeing one person having this much control. Stop pushing the agendas. Yes, this is about a health issue, but again, it's a cold. I have four kids, a kindergarten, a second grader, a sophomore, and a senior. They hate, hate going to school. My second grader, I finally got the exemption, but before that exemption, guess who ended up back at the hospital because of her mouth? Because of bacteria from the masks. You didn't have to sit up with her all night while she was crying and bleeding from her mouth. You don't have to hold her while she can't eat because of a mask. They are disgusting, and they do no good whatsoever. And until you have four C-section scars and your names are on my kids' birth certificates, you'd have no control over them, because I'm still waiting on my child support check from you guys co-parenting with me for the last year and a half.
Mary Conlin? Mary Conlin? Christine Quant? Geneva Bivens?
Brenda Gilbert is yielding.
My name is Geneva Bivens, I live in Port Huron. On December 2nd, I emailed this entire board and Dr. Mercantant an article, a letter written to MDHHS as well as a link to a video by three highly respected industrial hygienists, court-certified subject matter experts with several decades of combined experience in their fields, Tammy Clark, Kristin Megan, and Steven Petty. Every commissioner was copied on Mercantant's response back to me. For those of you that don't know what industrial hygienists are, they're experts in respiratory protection, source control, exposure science, and pandemic response amongst other things. I FOIA'd all communications and documentation between the health department and the industrial hygienist certified in pandemic response that was consulted, contracted, or employed by the health department, excuse me, to advise on the use of face masks and other coverings by the general public during the COVID-19 pandemic. The response, "There are no such records." Sorry, you guys. Meaning, Mercantant hasn't consulted the actual experts on respiratory protection, source control, exposure science, and pandemic response. She would rather go with the majority of so-called experts that lack the credentials to give guidance on masking, just like the studies that lack scientific proof that masks lower, stop the spread, and lack proof that masks don't cause harm. In Mercantant's attempt to discredit these experts, she not only solidified the validity of the information that I provided, she further discredited herself in the health department's handling of the pandemic. Dr. M claims, and I quote, "Face masks are a valid and important tool for an aerosolized virus, and despite the lack of good randomized controlled trials, which is the gold standard for proving something..." I just lost my spot, sorry. Okay, "The balance of potential harm versus potential good clearly is in favor of using masks," end quote. There are several decades worth of documented scientifically proven harm caused by the use of face masks in several settings and situations that Dr. M chooses to ignore. She is also ignoring scientific proof that face masks do not slow or stop the spread of aerosolized viruses. They actually increase the spread and cause other illnesses like bacterial infections of the skin, sinuses, and lungs that are deadly, as well as other serious harms. Dr. M also states, and I quote, "I have yet to see any reliable or reproducible information to suggest face coverings cause significant physiological, which means physical harm to an individual." I FOIA'd all reported physiological and psychological adverse events related to wearing a face mask and other face coverings by the general public during the COVID-19 pandemic in our county. Excuse me. FOIA response, "These items are not reported nor logged by St. Clair County." In other words, the health department is not keeping track of the harms that are caused by wearing masks. If they were, there would not be recommendations or mandates telling people to wear masks, and there would not be mask mandates in schools. The same would be true if several decades worth of scientific proof wasn't being ignored. Masks are harmful when worn by the general public, and especially harmful to children. Which leads me to Dr. Mercantant's statement that, and I quote, "Research and scientific study takes time." In other words, Mercantant and the state are conducting a mask experiment on the people that violates several federal and state laws, the Nuremberg Code, and the Constitutions. I have to ask, how do those state charts on masking look now, look now, Dr. Mercantant? Too bad she's not here, right? Anyone who has been paying attention, like I have, knows the answer. Even Dr. Fauci, who some believe is their COVID lord and savior, wrote a paper on the Spanish flu outlining the fact that more people died from bacterial pneumonia during the outbreak than the flu itself. The cause of bacterial pneumonia was wearing masks. Fauci said, and I quote, "The unmasked were burying the masked." Our own health department isn't tracking the physical harms of wearing masks, which includes bacterial pneumonia that can be deadly for many people, especially when you're now dealing with antibiotic-resistant bacterial infections. Speaking of physical harms that are not being tracked, I FOIA'd all reported injuries and deaths in our county related to COVID-19 vaccine. Response, "St. Clair County does not receive or log vaccine events." Our health department isn't tracking adverse reactions to COVID vaccines, and they're promoting them as safe and effective. They also refuse to acknowledge almost 1 million VAERS reports of vaccine injuries and deaths. Dr. Mercantant stood at this very podium and told this board that she hasn't seen any adverse reactions to vaccines. It's easy not to see something when that information isn't being reported to or tracked by the health department, and when the CDC's very own VAERS reports that are subject to felony charges, if falsified, are being ignored.
About 20 seconds, please.
I will close with this. Why is Dr. Mercantant, who is not making objective decisions based on science, whose decisions are endangering the health and well-being of every resident of St. Clair County, especially our children still employed by the county? And when will this board take action to put a stop to it? Thank you.
Nicole Bender? Melissa Garcia?
Good evening. So on December 17th, I see a news report from Fox 2 Detroit citing the state's website and their statement that data released by the state of Michigan showed coronavirus transmission rates among school-aged children have reached comparable levels regardless of community mask mandates. Okay, so the state has said transmission levels don't change based on a community's mask mandate, masked or not, no difference. So the precept that this is protecting people has already been nullified. It's not the case, okay? But less than three weeks later, here goes St. Clair County Health Department mandating masks on our schoolchildren because of the presence of Omicron. Okay, the same variant that is said to be less severe because it doesn't enter the lungs. So we're masking our kids for a variant that's less severe, even though there's no difference among districts masking and not. That doesn't make sense to me. But let's look at these numbers and see if maybe we can make sense, okay? So from January 4th, 2020, through December 25th, 2001, an entire two years, the deaths from COVID in children age zero, or 1 to 18, okay? On the CDC website, this is in the entire country, 1 to 18 COVID deaths, 803 kids, okay? We have a population of that age group, 73 million. So the deaths attributed in our children to COVID comes out to .0005%. Okay, masking our children is not for their safety. That's another false precept that she's putting out there. That's ridiculous, okay? Obviously, losing one child is tragic, but these are not the numbers that support public health policy. That's ridiculous. Okay? So there are some masks I can support, an N95. If someone's at risk, if they're older, if they're concerned, they have every right to wear an N95 mask. Teacher, lunch lady, grandma's grandpas, people can wear an N95 mask, okay? Because they choose to utilize their rights to protect themselves that way. It's not my kid's job to do that for them. They have an option, they can use it. They can use it. Okay? So likewise, likewise, our children who aren't at risk have an amazing ability to develop their own natural immunity to COVID-19, okay? Why is St. Clair County Health Department trying to deny them of that opportunity by masking them up and keeping them away from a virus that they can gain their immunity to? And really, why is she refusing to acknowledge the COVID-recover population as a whole? Because I hear nothing in policy acknowledging those who have natural immunity. I don't hear it. I have no respect for an institution which touts its following the science while it completely dismisses the fundamental science. The vaccines are simply a manufactured attempt to mimic what the body's immune system already does, okay? And I'm tired of them talking about antibody levels, okay? They like to talk about the antibody levels, but they never mention that the immune system has memory T and memory B cells, okay? I might not have antibodies right now. I've had COVID. But as soon as I'm re-exposed, do you know what those memory T and those memory B cells do? They start kicking out the antibodies again immediately, preventing illness. Why is this ignored? She has to know this. She has to. Okay. Again, if people want to utilize a vaccine, they have the right to do that. And again, it's not my kid's job to do that for them. Okay? So, that's about it. I just think it's time for you, the elected leaders, who are all up for reelection this fall. It is time to represent the people you're elected to represent and tell the St. Clair County Health Department she's no longer going to use our children as pawns. It's unnecessary. It's false. And we're not going to take it anymore.
Lilly Teed? Lilly Teed?
Hi. I would like to start off by saying I would really like to thank Dr. M for coming today. I'm sure we all really appreciate that. Anyway, I'll start off by saying I have only ever had one normal year of high school. That was four years ago in my freshman year. I have missed out on so many wonderful things. My homecomings, my proms, so many things that no teenager should ever have to miss. And I would like to say it is ridiculous that you think we are going to sit in a classroom six hours a day, five days a week, and wear a mask continuously. That does not happen. And at my school, we do not get mask breaks. So, we sit there for 45 minutes in a mask. But I will tell you that no one wears it. No one wears it correctly. We pull it down on our chin, pull it below our nose, or we just take it off completely. They are not worn. And they don't work. They have never worked, and they are not going to start working now simply because you want them to. Also, I would just like to say that I am not your child, and you are not my parent or my doctor. You have no right to tell me what I can and cannot do with my body, what goes on my body and what also goes in my body. And you are not making rules based on policy... or, I'm sorry. You are not making rules or policy based on what is the best for everyone. You are forming your own opinion, enforcing it on the citizens that you work for, the citizens who pay taxes. I would also like to say... Okay, actually, I'm good.
Jennifer Teed?
Jennifer Teed? Good evening. I'm here tonight with both of my children. Neither of them are wearing a mask. And there's way more people in here than would ever be in a classroom with them. We cannot comment on social media. We cannot question Dr. Merkentant. We cannot ask questions on her livestream unless we kiss her butt first. She responds to emails with personal attacks and unprofessionalism. So, it's no surprise at all that she is not here tonight, still controlling the situation. My kids do not get mask breaks. My daughter gets migraines. They dislike school when they used to love going to school. Both of my kids are honor students. They're both straight A students. They're great. My daughter chose a college based on her liberty and not having to get a vaccine or wear a mask. So... So, when she graduates, she's being forced to go to school in Virginia so that she can have a free education. I wanted to point out that Dr. Merkentant did not rescind her mandate when schools were going to lose students, meaning that they would also lose funding. She rescinded it when her funding was threatened. I emailed you guys this week. I only got one response. I always hear the same old thing. "Dr. M is not an Atwill employee, and she cannot be fired." I would say that's utter BS. People all over the country are being fired left and right for not being vaccinated. Many of those people are under contract also. She is insubordinate, unprofessional, and interfering now with patient and doctor relationships and healthcare by threatening doctors with fines for authorizing a mask exemption. These are reckless actions that not only justify her firing, but should begin an investigation. She should have her medical license suspended. I don't know where the line is with you guys, but I really feel like the more that you continue to allow this to go on, it's going to get worse and worse. You have to put your foot down, and she needs to be fired immediately. For any commissioners that refuse to act immediately, they need to be replaced. We need people to step up in these districts and get... just get the job done. I don't... We might not be able to let her go until June, and then if she's under a contract, then that's fine.
Please wrap it up.
Okay. In November, when election time comes around, her job's not safe anymore.
What's your name?
I'm almost done.
You've already yielded your time.
I'm done. We just need real patriots to step up and fill these positions. That's all. We are a parent group with hundreds of people.
Need to yield? Well, we have plenty of yields that people have yielded earlier. We gave Dr. Merkentant an extra three minutes and 30 seconds. That's fine. Let her go.
Yeah. We'll give you another three seconds. I have like five more seconds of talking. We're a parent group of hundreds of parents in St. Clair County, and I just want to say that we are ready and willing to back anybody who is ready to step up and run against the commissioners who refuse to act.
Yes!
You have our support.
Adam Thoreau? Adam Thoreau?
How you guys doing today? My name's Adam Thoreau. I am from Kimball Township. Normally, I don't come up here. Normally, I don't come to this meeting. I'm a veteran. I have PTSD. I don't do crowds. You guys have me so pissed off that I have to show up here because it's affecting my children. I have eight children. Eight. Six of them live at my house every single day. My wife's right here. She can tell you the stories of my daughter crying yesterday because she couldn't go to school to turn her library book in because she didn't want to wear a mask. We are pissed. All of you got an email from me, okay? As a county commissioner, I would imagine that I should get a response from every single one of you. I received a response from these two gentlemen here. That was it. Why are you a commissioner in charge of this county if you're not going to respond to my issues that I have as a citizen of this county? I also bring a lot of money to this county. I have contacted the school board of Port Huron. I looked up who Dr. Merkentant reports to. Right on your website, the organizational chart says she reports to you guys. The Health Department goes directly to the Board of Commissioners. So, I want to talk about accountability. If someone's making 200 grand and works for the Health Department, which is a public health department, she damn well better be at this meeting when I show up. She's going to write a letter because she's so cowardly that she can't be here. That drives me insane. Now, that we're talking about accountability, who's to hold you guys accountable? Because you're not holding her accountable. I was in the military 10 years. I did stuff I didn't want to do. I fought enemies that were cowardly. This is what they do. They don't show up. I have to go seek them out. That's why I'm here. I'm sorry to tell you, a mask does not work. It's common sense, okay? If it's not sealed around your face, it's not protecting you. If I go in a gas chamber, I'm wearing a mask.
You do need to wrap it up.
If I'm going as a firefighter...
Your name?
John Warren.
Thank you.
If I'm a firefighter going into a fire, I'm wearing a mask that's pumping oxygen into my face, okay? These N95, I don't care what you say. It doesn't work. It's not completely sealed around your face. And a cloth mask really doesn't work, okay? Really? It all comes down to accountability for me. I was going to get up here and give you a bunch of stats and MCLs and all this about the Constitution and all that. My hat, as you can see, says "We the People." This is the people that you work for. As far as I'm concerned, you're not doing your job because you're not holding her accountable to do her job. We all know things roll downhill. I don't know if it's great that kids have to get up here and talk to the Board of Commissioners. I think that's awesome that they do. But, I mean, this is adult business that we... I shouldn't have to bring my kids here to get up in front of you guys. I mean, this should be common sense. So, with that... Sorry, I could get kind of emotional because I have so many kids in this area. Monday night, my kids were given the opportunity of if they wanted to go to school or not on Tuesday. They could go to school with no mask, or they're going to stay home. They all chose to stay home, but my oldest daughter, she's 16. She's a sophomore at PH. I got a phone call to come get my child from school. After that phone call, I emailed everyone again because nobody wants to have face-to-face meetings or whatever the case may be. I emailed them. In that email, it had some MCLs that they were violating, some things that I feel they were violating, and now it's crickets. So, as county commissioners, I would expect you guys to be able to do your job. I mean, I don't feel like you should have to have 200 people here coming to complain about this. We're two hour... you know, we're an hour and 15 minutes of people getting up here to complain about the masks. Do something. Hold her accountable. Because you better believe I'm going to be the first one in line to hold all of you accountable.
Randy McCracken? Randy McCracken?
Hi, guys. I didn't prepare a speech or anything because I just kind of wing it. But this is my son. This is Mason. I want you guys to look this boy in the face because the decisions that you guys are not making is affecting his life. As of the first day back to school, I pulled my children from the school district. They are no longer in the school district. I pulled them from the only school district they have ever known. This is an AB athlete student. And this is what your lack of decisions are doing. You're robbing this from my son and my oldest son. And I am sick and tired of it. Do your damn jobs. You guys must... Did you not take a constitutional oath? I'm just wondering, did you? Because I think she did too, right? Okay, well, I'm just wondering. But anyways, it's not fair. You're destroying their lives. These things do not work. My kids almost passed out because she mandated a mask for football players to wear. They almost passed out. Then I got to buy them a little visor over their helmet, and that was okay, but their mouth was still exposed. It makes no damn sense. You guys need to do your jobs and hold her accountable. This is not okay. We, the parents, are seeking constitutional lawyer. Yes, we did. Kathleen Henry. The council has went to the school board meetings with us. She has FOIA'd the Health Department and FOIA'd on the purification and isolation of this virus. There is no proof that it even exists, you guys. I put it on my Facebook. You are more than welcome to look through all the bullcrap things that I post. You are more than welcome to look, but it's there. It's there. And let me tell you another thing. This racist stuff about how it's only white people patriots coming up here to defend their children. I am Native American and German. I'm a walking contradiction, okay? But I am up here. I am a minority. And damn it, my voice matters. And my kids' lives and their schooling matters. They should be going to school and being with their friends and having what we had. This is bullcrap, you guys. And you guys got to stop it. One, only one of you returned my emails. Only one. When are you guys going to do what is best for we, the people, that pay your guys' salary?
About 10 seconds, please.
I'm sorry, your name?
Okay. Thank you. I can't express how upset I am. My husband is a veteran as well, and he can't even come here. My children can't wear a mask. They can't wear it. And they won't wear it. It's their body autonomy. They have the right to tell you, "No." They have the right. I just want you guys to do your job and have a conscience, okay? In 2016, just a little backstory. I went out to North Dakota Standing Rock, and I stood against the US government on desecration of our ancestral land to put a pipe... against the US government on desecration of our ancestral land to put a pipeline in, okay? The things that happened to us, you guys, would blow your damn minds. We were on, we were not, we didn't have weapons, we were in prayer, we had our stuff with us. They brutalized us. We were living in, in sub, below temperatures, which was our choice, but they sprayed us with water, with antifreeze in it. They crop dusted us with uranium-235 and crop dusted us with Rosal that was discontinued in 1973. We were bleeding out of our noses and we were peeing blood. I come home to Port Huron, and I went to Port Huron Hospital. I told them what happened to me. They backed away from me. They wouldn't even touch my body or examine me. Went to the University of Michigan, they did the exact same thing. I called my tribe. My tribe said, "Randy, all you need is a vitamin K drip." As soon as I got that, the nose bleeding and the urine, the, the blood in my urine stopped. I'm begging you, parents, hold these people accountable. Hold them accountable. Because that corruption that I faced, I'm seeing it. Okay? We, we need to do this. Because obviously, the job's not getting done.
Kelly Van Single?
Okay, good evening, commissioners. As you can see, the community is very disappointed in what is going on, and as far as I'm concerned, you all are the leaders and can stop this. I too am a teacher, and it saddens me every day to see how this is affecting staff and children. And if it's true, because I read that somewhere in the Times-Herald, you are receiving just as many emails from people that want masks in the schools. I would debate this and have to say that the people reaching out to you are not parents of the school. Not at all. I teach in a school of almost 600 students in elementary. I have 24 students in my class, and before the mask mandates, one chose to wear a mask every day. Walking down the hall, rarely did you see somebody with a mask. And while, let's see, sorry, lost my spot. I also have children, four children, who go to a different school district in middle and high school, and they too tell me that hardly any student nor teacher wears a mask unless there's a mandate. Again, telling me that if parents were very concerned, they at least would have a choice. And they can tell their children and their children's teachers to help them mask up. And I, as a teacher, would definitely remind them all day long, if that's what the parents wanted. The good doctor took away that choice for us. We don't have that choice anymore if we want to go unmasked. The majority of their kids, or the parents, are sending their schools without masks, and as Lilly said, even now, they are doing that with the mandate. It's hilarious that I have to spend my entire day, instead of teaching, saying, or they want me to say, "Pull your mask up. Pull your mask up. Wear your mask correctly. Wow, that mask is disgusting. Let me get you a new one." It's sad. I want to teach. I went into school, to college, to be a teacher. I, I feel like I haven't been a teacher in three years since this started. If you ask any of the principals, call a principal in the county, any, any principal, see how many people or children wore masks before this. Parents could have sent them with masks.
About 20 seconds, please.
Our kids are not in danger. Now, the good doctor had said that something to affect that it's not enough to just recommend the masks, they need to mandate it, but why? Why the scare tactics? I'm here because you are in charge. You are our leaders. You have to step up, and preferably by ending her contract. We were all here in September. You saw how upset we were, and here we are again, and it's ridiculous that we have to be here again. I'm missing out on three of my children's activities because I think this is important. But I also think it's important to be a mom, and you're taking that away from us, and I'm upset. I really don't have anything else. It was almost it. But if she would have published that letter and the superintendent of St. Clair County, we would have had a whole lot more to say. But I like how they just said it now so we didn't have time to prepare before we came. Because I will tell you what. Yes, staff shortage is a problem. However, you know what? The majority of staff in our building is vaccinated, and they're the ones that have been out the most. And I'm not going to go into that debate, but I'm saying that they also have that choice. And if it goes to the point where they get ill and we have to go to virtual, then that's okay. I want them to be in school, but if we don't have a staff, if we have a staff shortage, then I'd rather have them be unmasked and have to go that two weeks and then come back again. And we don't have that option of going virtual in East China because if you go virtual, you can't play sports. So it's not that easy that we can stay home or keep our kids home, because then if you take away their sports, you are taking away what is important to them. And I am, as a teacher, furious that more teachers, more principals, more school boards, and you don't stick up for us more often. I'm surprised that you didn't come out and say Monday, "No, this has to stop." It's infuriating, sad, and you're also causing mental stress on us parents. I, like everyone else, has to hear their kids and how sad it is. My son said today that he was in class, and instead of teaching, because no one was wearing their masks right, the principal had to come down, the teacher called him down, they got yelled at for the entire time because their masks weren't on properly. It's just exhausting that this has to continue on, over and over. It's not even three months later, it seems like, and we're here again. Are we going to be here next month? Do you enjoy this? Because I don't think you do. I'm just saying. It's, and you say you don't have the ability or right to, to fire her or make her accountable, then who does? Tell us what to do. What should we do? And where do we go to next? Because I feel like it needs to start at the bottom and move up, and that's why I'm here as a parent. Okay, I think that's it. And next time, I'll have more prepared.
Cheryl Bowersacks?
I hope you're listening because I hope you know my opinion matters.
That's it, guys. That's it, guys.
My classmates all have been, well, none of them have been wearing the mask except for like one. And I like that her parents had her wear the mask and not you have us mandate it. And I thought we had rights. I would really appreciate it to wear the mask and not have, well, and have the choice to not wear it than wear the mask and have the choice, well, to not have the choice to wear it. I, I would really wish that it wasn't just me and my friend Lincoln over there speaking here today as kids. And as the other people that have come up here to speak have said that the masks don't work, and you can go on to YouTube or the internet and search stuff about the masks and easily find out that they don't work. And the only masks that do work are secure to your face, not the surgical masks that are like an inch or two off your face. And I wonder why you're mandating this, but only two of you here are wearing it.
Hello. I wasn't sure if I was going to speak, but I'll always get up and stand up for my children and all the other children. COVID is not going away. We have to get back to living. We now know so much more than we did in the beginning, and we know that for 99% of the population that gets COVID, they will survive and thrive. And for those that have more severe cases, science has provided us with very effective treatment options that people need to be educated about, and they need to be made more readily available. One such effective treatment protocol is the Dr. Vladimir Zelenko Protocol, and it has a 99% survival rate of high-risk COVID-19 patients. Regarding the most recent mask mandate, I will tell you the way that it has been personally affecting my family. I have two beautiful, healthy teenage daughters that were recently told that they could not attend school unless they complied with the health department's latest mask mandate. My soon-to-be 16-year-old does not believe that masks are a big deal, but she also does not believe that they're effective, nor does she want to wear a mask all day at school. However, she wants to be with her friends to fit in and not have her mother embarrass her, and so I've allowed her to make her own choice, and she is choosing to comply with the mandate. My 12-year-old, however, told me that thinking about having to wear a mask again at school brought back bad memories. From being afraid to get reprimanded for pulling her mask down to take a drink of water, having headaches daily, and not being able to socially interact with her peers were a few of the issues experienced during the last mask mandate. She was having a lot of anxiety and tearful moments just thinking about going back to masking, but again, she wanted to be with her peers and fit in. The decision as to how to proceed with her was a more difficult one, but ultimately, we decided that for her health and mental well-being, she would complete her studies under her parents' direction from home, which comes with yet another set of challenges, but was the better option for her. And when or if the mask mandate is lifted, she will be returning to school at that time. The following school year, we will review our other educational options for her, such as private school or homeschool. My husband and I have been together for 25 years, but we are at a crossroads with this issue. Much like my older daughter, he does not think that masks are a big deal and was not happy with the decision to have Kara stay at home. Divorce was mentioned. He's currently only speaking to me via text and sleeping in the basement. This mandate has far-reaching implications for our children's health and well-being and the stability of the family unit. I would like to point out that the Nuremberg Code, Article 6, Section 3 on War Crime States, that leaders should be aware that mandating masks on the citizens of a nation and preventing their access to food, healthcare, transport, or education, if they don't comply, is a war crime. Masks or any other medical intervention must remain voluntary. Masks are medical devices, and science has taught us that regular masks do not work to stop an airborne virus, but do work to deprive of oxygen and cause a whole host of other problems. At a hearing on August 19th, 2021, Michigan House of Representative Kara Hope spoke to Dr. Christina Parks and said, "So if I have a business, I can require people to wear their hair short or dress a certain way. Why can't I require them to wear a mask?" And Dr. Christina Parks answered that stating that mask-wearing is a biochemical nightmare. It's a metabolic nightmare that increases your risk of cancer, it increases your cardiovascular risk, your body has too much CO2 in it, which helps cancer to grow. It's actually extremely inflammatory. It's going to exacerbate every inflammatory disease, including diabetes and hypertension. It can actually cause hypertension because your body is trying to breathe harder to actually maintain homeostasis, but it can't because it keeps getting too much CO2 and not enough oxygen. And so you are asking people to put their health at risk. Some people can medically tolerate this, but many cannot. And we do know that suicides amongst teenagers are up amongst teenage girls by 50%. Those are my daughters. This is not okay, and they will not be used as political pawns.
Thank you. Thank you, Board, for having me here tonight. I appreciate your time. I'll just give you a little background real quick. I've spoke here once before, so you know you remember me, but I've been a chiropractor for the last 24 years. I practiced in Marlette, Michigan at the time, right now. I was 10 years on the Yale School Board. I was board president for some years. I've done 10 years of Sunday School class with my wife, and we teach, and now she's teaching more, and I'm helping her with the Sunday School class. And this is where it comes down to. I don't want to be here, they don't want to be here, but I'll tell you, you guys have helped me a lot. Because I've told my wife, I'm like, "We're going to go to this. Tonight, we're playing basketball. We love basketball. We're playing Crossville." Well, we're not going there, and I'll tell you some reasons why. But to hear you people talk at times, I'm like, "Oh, thank you. Thank you, they've read something, heard something, just using sense instead of fear, hiding behind these untruthisms." So they're just not even truths, and we hide behind it, and then it just gravels our mind. I live in a bubble up in Marlette, I must say. It's been fantastic. Obviously, no social distancing, right? I'm a chiropractor for two years. Obviously, I've worked on the Mennonite community. I worked on the Amish community. We don't mask or nothing. I know it's kind of hidden, but it's been fantastic, and we've had no trouble. So I, I do, I'm thankful for where I'm at. But now here at my town, I live in, in the Yale School District, I have six children. I have three and one in Florida, I have one, I have one in Florida, I have one in Colorado, I have one in the US Naval Academy, and I have a couple in school right now. But here's what happened at Sunday School this last week, what made me do this. So we got the little kids, we're doing our thing, and the little girl goes, "Oh, we have to wear masks." I don't even know what's going on. I'm a good dad, I think. I don't pay attention, and I guess there was something coming up. I'm like, "Oh, boy." The little girl's talking to the other kid. "Oh, it gets so wet, and they make us sneeze in it and cough in it, and it's so disgusting. I don't even want to go to school." And I'm like, "Oh, my goodness, they're doing that mask thing again? You got to be kidding me." And, and then just talking to her and hearing her. I used to have a saying at my house, "Great to be a kid. Great to be a kid." I mean, you come to my house, I mean, it's good. I mean, my kids, it's good to be a kid, even through this time. So the next day comes, and my son Timothy, he's a junior, he goes up to school, and we're like, "Oh, boy. He's not going to wear a mask." I'm like, "Tim, all right, we're going to do what you got to do." He does his thing, and Tim's an A student, all this good stuff, loves his basketball, and alls they say is, "Well, son, you won't be playing basketball." "Well, son, you won't be playing basketball." He comes home, he says, "Dad, I'm done. I'm not doing it." I said, "Keep your grades up, Tim. We'll see what we can do." My other daughter, she plays basketball. We gave her the choice. She's, "Mom, I don't want to, I don't want to miss. I want to go to basketball. I want to play." Okay? Michaela, we'll let you do that.
About 10 seconds.
Thank you. So we go through this.
How about, how about we use Mark Bowersacks, who's already yielded?
Thank you. I appreciate that. So, so anyway, that's all it was. So I thought, "Well, you can do this, Tim, you stay home, you do your ba, you do this online thing." Well, they don't offer that. So you got to keep up with his grades. So then he goes up to basketball practice, because after 2:30, you don't have to wear masks no more. I don't know if you knew that. So when you're up there, then he goes to basketball, he's doing warm-ups. There's nobody in a mask. And then they said, somebody saw somebody, at first, his coach was like, "Ah." And they'll be, "Oh, you can't do that. You weren't here." I know I wasn't here, but I did all my schooling at home. You can ask my teachers. I got with them online. I have everything done in hand. I'm good. They said, "That doesn't matter. You weren't here." Okay. So Tim came home. So he can't play. Can't play tonight either. So you're just, and no one's in masks. So at our house, it's a, it's a great place to be a kid. So after school, we have kids come to our house. And what do they all say? They say, "Oh, Tim, nobody's doing nothing. It's a joke." But here's the thing, let me just get off to that. I felt like on the school board, as a citizen in life, too, our job is to fight for the ones who can't fight. I've told my children this. Our job is to fight for children or to fight for the elderly. That's what you do when you have to do it. And this time, I'm here to stand up for the kids. This is child abuse. I, I, it's wrong. It's, 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 it's not good. It's, it's, it's not good. And, and I'll, I'll sum it up quickly. More good speakers that want to speak. There's some great things out there right now. One guy that struck me the other day that I read, read some things is Robert Kennedy just wrote a book, The Real Anthony Fauci. Robert Kennedy, and I read this book, and it's a long book, so I do auto with it, too. It's amazing. And it'll show you the documentation, it's over 100 experts, over 100 doctors. Now, the reason my hat goes off to Robert Kennedy for sure is, he does not have to do this. Robert Kennedy can go- Robert Kennedy can go on the yacht, Robert Kennedy can go golfing. Robert Kennedy does not have to do this. And to see what he's written in this book, and as I read it, I go, "Oh, thank you, Lord." Because these are the things that I've seen in my practice with healthcare, these are the things that I think people need to hear, and I thank a guy with a name like that that doesn't have to do that, especially the outcast who'll be on that party probably, and some things that they're getting. I appreciate what Robert Kennedy has done. I would also like to end with this. I feel that the Board here, Committee, needs to take this community, this St. Clair County, in a different direction at this time. We need to move forward. Thank you.
Yeah, will adjourn for 10 minutes?
No, not even 10.
Five minutes?
Quick little bathroom break.
All right.
All right. Thank you so much for allowing us to come and speak tonight. I just want to share that, as many others shared, it was quite surprising to get that notice that we were going to be required to wear masks when we went back, went back to school after the Christmas break, and it was very disheartening. So right away, I got on the phone, and I called my District 1 Greg McConnell, and he was out of town, I left him a message, and then, as soon as Monday came around, I called Dr. Mercantant, left her phone number, talked to Greg McConnell again, and she, she did call me back, surprisingly, and her response to me was quite surprising over our conversation. She told me that if, she didn't expect everyone to follow this order, I didn't have to send my kids to school, just send them without a mask, then she told me. And I said, "Well, my son did go to school without a mask, and he got sent home." And she said that she would be happy if only 20% of the students would follow this mask. That's what she said. So I was like, I had, was very surprised that she was that bold about saying it, and people asked me if I recorded it, and obviously, I wish I had, but I was traveling at the time. So I just find it very disheartening that we are having a director that is making this mandate, but is not really have any way of backing up. She said she doesn't have the manpower to send people out, so it just is very disturbing. So I decided that I would look up the cases of the schools that did follow her highly-recommended masking. So, and I emailed this to all of the commissioners, but I just wanted to share it with all of you guys, too. So I looked up in the Yale Public Schools between, this is the first three weeks of November, compared to the three weeks between Thanksgiving and Christmas. So in Yale, there were 31 cases the first three weeks of November, 26 cases when masks were highly-recommended, but Yale chose to keep them optional. In Algonquin schools, because Algonquin was one of them that followed it, they had 29 cases at the beginning of November, the first three weeks, when they were optional. They had 61 cases when there were masks that were followed. And the same in Port Huron area schools, they had 138 cases in the beginning of November, and then 139 cases when masks were required. So this right here shows you, and it's on their website, this is their data of cases, so I don't know what our Health Director is going off of, if this is readily available to her, and it proves nothing that needed to be followed. So I just want to also let, I think I also emailed this to the Commissioners, but I would like to let everyone else here know also, that I personally went to my superintendent and asked him. I wanted him to confirm for me-
That's good, you need to wrap it up.
I wanted him to confirm for me that Yale Public Schools was managing well over the course of the first year, of the first half of this year, and without any mandates, and he confirmed for me that Yale was. And he also said, in the superintendent meetings, he got the feeling that the majority of superintendents were not in favor of masks mandating. They were not in favor of it. So I don't know where her, her thought is that the superintendents in the schools are in favor of this, but they're not. So I just would like to ask that it would be kept optional, and I just want to tell my District 1 Commissioner again, that if it comes to a vote, I would like you to vote in favor of dismissing her. I do not want her. Oh, when I had this up here, because I just thought people might want to know that this was in the Yale Expositor, two weeks in a row. They have no masks. They have, this is the Health Department, this is their ad. Yeah. Full-page ad with our funding of our Health Department.
We did.
Yeah.
Sean Treadaway?
Chairman Poem, Commissioners, thank you. A little admin note, even the Times Herald reported that there were, you were all expecting an overabundance of people coming to this meeting, so it is disgusting that Tim had to walk up and ask why the room wasn't open. So just get that out of the way. Unexcusable. That's probably a word that should be said more. All right, so our group, we don't have an army of lawyers behind us, we don't have a taxpayer staff backing up all our decisions. We do all this on our own. Everybody that's out there in the crowd, we're fighting, we're trying to, you know, get to you, get into your heads to realize that not only do we not agree with what Mengele is, Mercantat is doing, but most of it is illegal. Even if Corporate Counsel doesn't want to grow it up and actually, you know, go after it, if you do read into the MCLs, it's all in there. First and foremost, she should have came to you and us right off the bat and said, "I want this mandate, would you please set up a public hearing for it?" So anyways, so the doctor had a choice, and she made it. You know who didn't? Our schools, our teachers, our admins, our janitors, most importantly, our children. People always ask me, "Sean, well, I don't get why you're so passionate about this. You were in the Army. You were told what to do every day, you took every shot they were told to give you. You didn't have a choice." Wrong. I had a choice. I rose my hand, and I took an oath to start, and I said, "I'm giving you me to do with what you want." I had a choice. Right now, we don't. Neither do our kids. So the doctor, you know, again, I'm gonna repeat with Corporate Counsel's backing, because he seems to not, I hate to use the word backing, because he just pretty much says, "That's the law." So, maybe fight for us, we pay you, damn it. I'm all over the place tonight, I do, I do apologize, but I did notice that she's back to a threatening manner again, which is awesome. Did she call Mike Wendling, our prosecutor, to see if he was physically going to go to the schools and prosecute?
About 20 seconds, please.
Thank you. You know, is, are these fine gentlemen over here, our men in blue, are they gonna, are they gonna arrest the high schooler because he doesn't want to wear that mask? Does she even have the backing to push this order forward? Or is it just fluff? Thanks, Mrs. McClellan, for that. So, it's pretty funny. You know, we, a lot of us met with our superintendent on Monday, and those that know me, and those that know me in the crowd, I've been pretty critical of my school board and my superintendent in, on, on Monday, I, I felt for her. I firmly believed that she wasn't given the option, just like the rest of us weren't. Why? Because the doctor waited the day before a holiday weekend to drop the order. Did any of you know that that was gonna happen? I'm really curious to hear. I'm sure we won't. But again, she didn't request a public hearing. Parents, students, teachers, and superintendents trying to enjoy the last remaining couple days of 2021. That's been a hell of a year, okay? And what does she do? Like, the coward that she is, like most mainstream medias do, they drop the major story on a Friday, or they drop it before a holiday, in hopes that we're going to calm down, or maybe we're gonna forget about it. We're not. So, it's pretty funny. The doctor fully knew what she was going to do, she's very spiteful, she's very vindictive, she's very retaliatory. A lot of good people out in this crowd. The individual that started the St. Clair County United Parents, I got that all wrong, but wrote a nice email asking specific questions, and the doctor was nasty. I don't give two hoots what we say about her, she's in the public. Okay? We are the voters, okay? She owes that respect whether she wants to or not. So, all right. Back to it, again, no communication with some of the superintendents, but plenty of communication with those that are in her back pocket. Theo from Port Huron, Sean from Marysville, I hate to say it, but Kevin Miller threw his hat into the ring with his late letter today. I'm pretty sure he didn't prepare that today, I will give him the, the respect to say, "He called me back today, we had a nice conversation." But I don't think it's right. So, the doctor's so concerned with the new spread, is it only targeting our students and our teachers? I mean, are they walking little, little bullseyes?
About 20 seconds, please.
Thank you. Ah, da-da-da-da. Again, almost like the six-foot rule, Covid cannot spread during after-school hour activities. Why hasn't she extended this order to all indoor dining and movie theaters? The building that we're in right now doesn't have a mask mandate, only schools. Some of you on this board own businesses, do you have big signs on your doors saying, "Do not enter without a mask"? No? All right. So why is it just for the kids? What's going on? I ask all of you where you stand on this. So that, so thank you for that, actually. So those of you that do own businesses that sit on this board, you know, we're not hearing from you as board members, it's, it's pretty weak. We did, we, we got a typical political comment out of Mr. McConnell, I've got just as many that are pro, that are like you guys, you know. Prove it. Put, put the pudding out there, let, let's see who, we don't need to see who they are, terrible phrase. Let's, just print something off, sense of the names, I want to see it, because we don't believe you. Okay? We, we get to hear from Sue D'Amato. Does everybody know who Sue D'Amato was? I'm pretty sure she's the former Health Director. I could be wrong, but maybe not. Anyways, think of who's backing up the good doctor, "I don't want to show up, because you're all gonna be a Covid spreader." Well, you can wear a mask, and I'm sure you're vaccinated. Just a thought again. So, a whole bunch of food for thought. Again, I understand why she's probably not here tonight for fear, which, you know, I'm not, I'm not expressing anything towards her, but, you know, she's making very unpopular decisions that aren't in the best interests of everyone. They're out of our choices, they're, they're not what we want to do. I'm guessing, for those of you that, that are honest with yourself, it's against what you want to do, too, but maybe that seat is too, too holy to you. Maybe you're afraid to speak up. Maybe you're afraid to speak your mind. I read a lot of your bylaws, and it doesn't say that Commissioners need to remain mute. Maybe, maybe a little communication with the citizens of this county would go a long way. Let us know where you stand. Part of the problem right now with the big crowds, and the angry parents, and the concerned citizens, is we don't know where you stand. You owe it to us. We don't stop paying your pretty decent amount of money to be on the board, because, you know, you don't speak to us. That keeps coming in. So for those of you that respond to emails to all of us, and I think we've pointed that out rather well tonight, thank you. We know it's a difficult job, we really appreciate it, but then again, you all took an oath. You all had a choice to become Commissioners. Thank you.
Larry McClellan? Larry McClellan? Larry McClellan?
Thanks for having us here for this, I guess. I think most everything's been said, there's not a whole lot to add, I wouldn't think, but the peer review, you know, this, the masks have not been peer-reviewed. I think everybody knows that, I guess, right? But they have peer-reviewed it for the flu. There's a reason we never wore them for the flu, because they don't work. The flu is a bigger, it's more microns than what the, the Covid is. We know it doesn't work for the flu, yet we think it's gonna work for a smaller virus? I'm pretty sure it doesn't pass the smell test there. It, it's not, again, you guys aren't idiots, I'm pretty sure. You probably can figure this out without any of us telling you that, but I would like to think that maybe with us all showing up, you'll see, I mean, this is, it's not 50%, trust me. I've talked to a lot of people, there ain't 50% of people that are for masks. There might, there might be 50% of people say they don't care if people wear masks or not. I'd care less, wear a mask or don't. But don't tell me that my kids have to wear a mask. It's not, it, it's really not your place and there's no medical proof that a mask is gonna help them. There's more proof that it's gonna hold, germs, whatnot. Think about it. The boxes used to say, you have to change that mask every two hours. Are the kids changing masks every two hours in school? Pretty sure they're not. Why is it every two hours? Cause what grows in a warm, wet climate? These kids have a damn Petri dish on their face. Why don't they start swabbing them at the end of the day and see what's in it? These, you're, you're gonna get these kids sicker with this than the, this COVID doesn't bug them. I, they, they get mildly sick. It doesn't make sense. Again, do the math, it doesn't add up. Our, our great doctor here, I don't know where she is, but you know, I'd like this explained to me because I don't pass the bull crap test. And I think that, I think all you know it. I don't know why you feel beholden to it, but I wish you'd stand up and say, no. These, these are the people that are gonna be, these people are here tonight. They're willing to stand up and work for people that will do what's best for our children. And, and I'd like to know, when are we gonna find out? When are you guys gonna take this to task? When are we gonna know that you guys stepped up and either did something about it?
About 20 seconds, please.
By the 20 second?
No.
Oh, I have 20 seconds. Alright, well, fine enough. I, I would like, by the end of this meeting, we'd like to know if you're gonna, when will we know that something's gonna happen? Can you guys let us know that?
Trisha Jones? Trisha Jones?
Please forgive me. A lot of people touched on things I had prepared and I don't do public speaking, so um, okay, I am here. I am new to the county. Um, I have two seniors in one of the high schools here and I have a middle schooler. My seniors have missed out on almost their entire high school experience. They wanted some normalcy. They want to walk for graduation. They want prom. They want to be able to experience those things. I have a son who is in the middle school in a different district. Um, and he has not had any middle school experience, nor does he have any friends out here because we were new to the district. He is loving being able to go back to school, to make those, those personal relationships, those personal connections to people and get to know some people around him. Um, it's been really hard for the last two years almost, um, watching these kids struggle, being at home, being virtual at their last district because we didn't have an option for in-person. Um, or it was hybrid and my schedule did not accommodate for that. Um, my kids are all honor roll students. Their grades all dropped. Their mental health was in the, in the gutter. It was, it's really bad. They are finally getting back to a really good place. So when I got this, I was really frustrated because we all, we all already know, the masks don't work. It's abuse. It's abuse for kids. It's abuse for adults. Any way you cut it, it is not okay. And further, it is not okay that we now are going to have our children getting segregated or removed from schools, that they're gonna be discriminated against because they're choosing not to wear this. Then they have to worry about retaliation or mistreatment from staff or other students because they chose to exercise their rights that are afforded to them under our beautiful constitution. Okay? So it is important that people need to realize that mandates are not laws. Okay? We are, we don't have to follow them. Okay? They, they're not. They are not put into law. They are not legislation. They are not. Um, and for the people who think that just because, oh, it's just a mask, it's not that big a deal. Um, you know, who cares if you had to put a mask on for 10 minutes to run in the store? It actually is a big deal because it is considered implied consent. When the majority of the public decides to, to go ahead and comply with mask or vaccine mandates, whatever it may be, that is actually implied consent from the public. That is acceptance by the public. And that is what is allowing this shit show to continue. Honestly, it really is. And you know what? That actually goes for the exemptions too. Do not get your kids an exemption because all you are doing is asking for permission for your kid to breathe freely. You don't have to ask for permission for your kid to breathe freely.
About 10 seconds.
That is afforded under the Constitution. Will someone yield me time? Now, I was gonna touch on some facts and I did email all of you with several reports, affidavits from industrial hygienists and, you know, OSHA professionals. We touched on some of them, um, the Tammy and Kristen. They had some really great points. I hope you guys took the time to read that and I actually was gonna use a lot of time and just read it so everybody has heard it because they talk a lot about the fact that not only do masks not work, they are not even considered PPE on their hierarchy of the engineer, of the controls, the safety controls. The best thing that these schools could have done that had a 96% efficacy rate was to install the i-ionizers, ionizers, sorry, air ionizers on the HVAC systems. Okay? Those would reduce or kill up to 96% of the pathogens and allergens, mold, um, any viruses like COVID-19, anything like that. But they are actually not even considered PPE, which is the lowest on that chart of, of the hierarchy. They actually fall below PPE because they are not rated or tested for material makeup protective factors, fit factors. We've already talked about this. We all know this. Um, I actually sent a FOIA to my school district to try to get information about whether these have been implemented into our HVAC systems in the school districts, just for my district with them. And then I sent you guys one because I'm, I'm interested to know, did we, did we put these in any of our, our schools anywhere? Because we know you got enough COVID funding to have it put in all of them. So, um, the reply I got back from that was that it was going to take in excess of 45 days and the cost to me was gonna be in excess of $10,000 for them to reply to my FOIA request for this information. That's disgusting. We are paying for all of you guys, all of you, to be here, for all of them to be here, for our kids to be there. And it's gonna be a charge to me. That's fine. I'll figure out a retort to that because they did not properly respond to me. They did not offer to give me any information that was available publicly online like they are supposed to, direct me to anything. Nothing. It was just a flat $10,000 and more than 45 days. We want 50% upfront to get started. Not okay. So, you know, these industrial hygienists and that, they've done a very, very thorough, it's actually supposed to be a peer reviewed study. Um, so if you have not read it, please take the time to read it. It is so informative. Um, you know, they talk in here, at the very end of this, this study, my favorite part here, they say,
About 20 seconds, please.
Will somebody yield time?
I'm sorry. Thank you.
They state that facial coverings are of particular concern for children for a variety of reasons, much of which is already known through OSHA's PPE and respiratory protection standards. Covering anyone's mouth and nose, restricting proper gas exchanges without following the strict protocols or the current standards is absolutely illegal and dangerous. This is why the standards exist in the first place and they have been in place since at least the 1970s with OSHA. When it comes to applying a blanket, one-size-fits-all face covering mandate on children, this should be considered criminal. It is nothing less than child abuse to restrict a child's normal breath, causing many well-known medical issues like hypoxia, hypercapnia, headache, fatigue, irritability, difficulty focusing, all the things that our kids got up and discussed. Um, it's real. It's, it's very difficult for them. Um, they, they talk about all the gases getting trapped. We saw the demonstration. We know that it does. Um, all of these documented health hazards of prolonged mask wearing. Says the aerosolized infectious respiratory diseases, and in fact, they actually create a greater hazard, increasing infection rates. And if superintendents and boards will not relent to parents' demands to unmask their children, they should be recalled immediately and replaced. Parents, your children's health is in your hands and nobody is going to do this for you. It is up to you to stop this and protect your children. No child should be forced to restrict their normal breath. If they are being forced, get them out of the schools and those daycares immediately. These are the OSHA professionals. Okay? So my first question is, can anybody tell me, have any of these engineering controls been put in our schools? Any, other than like, you know, the air, what do they have? They have the air stuff in the classrooms, right? Where they're supposed to actually do something with the air. That's not on your HVAC system. We don't care about cleaning the, the air in the room. I mean, okay, maybe it's an added something, but that's not according to the OSHA standards. We are not following these standards. So I don't know how, what scientists that, you know, the health director is referring to, but it's not the ones that are, continue to be silenced and be censored because they don't want them to be heard. They don't want the truth to be heard. So why are we gonna go against the 70 years of science and implement illegal and dangerous abusive mandates that have no proof of efficacy and can cause harm?
About 20 seconds, please.
One more yield? One more yield?
There's, Chris, can you pull up over the next one?
Yeah, there are three more total.
So we'll use one of those.
So my question is, are you all complicit in child abuse? I wouldn't think that you are. I'd hope that you're not, not with your children and not with ours. More importantly, it's not happening on our watch. We do not consent and we do, we will not comply. Okay? We know that the county, along with the schools, rely heavily on the federal funding. Maybe some special interest groups, maybe some donors or otherwise, local, who knows? Um, unions, associations that are dependent on you guys conforming and complying with these mandates. So I'm gonna suggest that either you're gonna stand up to these bullies in the establishment and stand for the people who voted for you, or you're gonna reconsider these partnerships altogether and depend on the people locally because I feel like we could do this if that's what it comes down to between our sheriffs, our schools, whatever. We need to do what's right for us in our district, in our county, whatever that's gonna be. We need to stop, stop complying and stop giving in to the bullies. Leave the decisions regarding students bodily autonomy to our students and our, the health to the parents. There will come a time in the not-so-distant future where I was just, just doing my job will not be an acceptable response to the charges of this abuse of arbitrary power locally and at the state and federal levels. So we are all here asking you today to stand with us today, on the right side of history and science, in protecting our children and our constitutional rights and freedoms and any integrity that the public school system might still have. Thank you for your time.
Elizabeth Ely?
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Ely and I run the Blue Water Holistic Health Network. While your health department has been issuing arbitrary rules based on garbage science presented in fancy PowerPoint slides, pretending something called peer review makes something truer than common sense, I've been keeping the people of this county out of the hospital by delivering natural antiparasitics to their doors in the middle of the night if necessary. We are done. We're getting on with things without your help or permission. This is not a negotiation. I declare that you have no authority over us on this. The health director has been messing with the children, again, declaring they must wear surgical masks, impeding their breathing and learning. She has even met privately with pediatricians to get their agreement to intimidate parents. She's messing with the wrong people. It's not a good idea to stand between a mama bear and her cubs, and with humans, that also includes fathers. Any further fighting over this properly belongs in court. Evidence of scientific malfeasance will be introduced. The health department already admitted it has no evidence of isolation of this virus and it doesn't know where else to look for it. That's perfect because the illness is clearly caused by a parasite, not a virus. Certainly, everything you have said and will say will be presented. This includes communications with your attorney as the Michigan Supreme Court recently clarified. I've already put into the record in my November remarks that your specific actions and explicit comments seek to violate the rights of the people as guaranteed under the Michigan and US constitutions. That said, I hope the people of this county will do something far more powerful and more frightening to you than filing lawsuits. I hope they will simply live as if none of these kangaroo court mandates and orders apply to them. They might throw you and your so-called health department the biggest insult possible, living in joy, purpose, faith, health and prosperity, as if you had nothing to say about it. And by that example, they're going to teach their children a lesson much more valuable than any propaganda thrown at them in local schools. It's been said that the masses always fall, follow the strongest force in the room. Well, meet the new strongest force. It's us not playing your game. We are standing in our truth, speaking from our hearts and living our best and most joyous lives. Thank you.
Lauren Martin? Lauren Martin?
Okay, first, I want to start by, I'm going to read my email to you all because I have no idea of any of you, aside from you, has read it. None of you have responded to it, aside from Mr. Rushing. Um, so I guess I'm gonna read it here to ensure that you all hear what I have to say. I'd also like to reiterate, someone made the point earlier that um, each and every one of you have the choice whether or not you wanted to wear a mask tonight. Yet our children don't have that choice when they're at school seven hours a day. Like seriously, what the is going on here? I mean, this is ridiculous. But, sorry. Okay, so I'm going to read my email. Um, okay. I am reaching out to you today in regards to the recent public health order issued by our dictator, Dr. Mercantat. There are so many things wrong with the issuance of this order, I'm not really even sure where to begin. First off, she has issued an order in direct defiance of our Board of Commissioners, all of you, as well as our governor. Per your resolution 2117B, citizens are to maintain the right to make personal medical decisions. Yet St. Clair County Health Department just took those rights away from us. The state budget specifically states that the county will not receive funding if they issue a face mask mandate, and yet here we are. I would like to know what the Board of Commissioners is going to do about the loss of income and the direct defiance of the Commissioners. What, or the health director, I'm sorry. What quite possibly bothers me the most is the fact that the order only targets our children and the staff too, but not the entire county. Why on earth are we allowing our health director to attack our children in such a manner? The very people who are affected the least from this virus. If this is truly about the health and safety of St. Clair County residents, then she would have issued a public health order for all citizens, businesses and entities within the county. But she didn't. I'm outraged at this grotesque behavior from our county health director and you should be ashamed for allowing this to happen. Our children do not deserve this. St. Clair County issued, St. Clair County Health Department issued a public health order at 4:15, the day before their offices closed for a long holiday weekend. How convenient. This is not the first time these antics have played out. Seems to be the theme for St. Clair County Health Department. Issuing, issuing unsupported and outlandish public health orders at the end of a day or week in order to completely avoid accountability. This is appalling. Multiple studies have been issued in regards to the efficacy of masks. Any grown adult with half a brain can tell you the silly cloth, ill-fitting, usually under their nose or chin, Old Navy masks that kids wear do absolut- do absolutely nothing to stop the transmission of COVID-19. St. Clair County Health Department reported 122, 122 cases the day before they issued the public health order. In fact, cases have been declining the last several weeks. It is widely known that the latest COVID-19 Omicron variant is much less severe than other variants. With declining cases, not overwhelmed healthcare systems, a less harmful new variant, knowledge is, knowledge that masks are completely ineffective of stopping the spread of COVID-19. How on earth are we here supporting and allowing children to be abused by our health department? I am appalled at the actions of this county over the past week. I implore each and every single one of you to stand up for our children. This is discrimination and defiance to the extreme and should not be tolerated. Citizens of this county have repeatedly asked- Citizens of this county have repeatedly asked you, the health department, schools, everyone, to allow parents to make medical health decisions for their children. I've got five seconds left. "We have asked all of you to let us make decisions for our health, make health decisions for our children and keep masks off of them, yet our health director clearly disregards yours, ours, and the governor's wishes and does whatever the hell she wants. It's disgusting. I want to know what every single one of our Commissioners is going to do to put a stop to this public health order immediately. I look forward to hearing from each and every one of you in a timely manner." I meant that last statement. Thank you.
First off, I have to say how proud I am of Lincoln, a current student, and Lilly, a former student. If ever asked, I'm going to claim they get their feisty from their parents. Elginak has been well represented here tonight. Please remember, Commissioners, that those kids, after sitting on a bus with a mask and in school for seven hours with a mask and on the bus again with a mask, just drove 45 minutes to an hour to speak up for their own rights that they shouldn't even have to fight for. Those are God-given rights. So we keep hearing, why the schools? Why the schools? The kids are not the ones that are getting the virus. They're not the ones that are in danger. Talking with Lincoln earlier, I think it only took us about three seconds to figure out why the schools. Why not anywhere else? If anything, this scam has taught me, just follow the money, right? Well, let's figure it out. The reason they go for the kids is because that's where they can get the greatest numbers. 600 in my elementary school alone. So how do they get the numbers they need? All they need to do is threaten to the schools, we're going to withhold your funding, and the districts are afraid to fight back, they're afraid to say no, and the masks are put on. Parents are afraid to keep their kids away from their friends, so they go with masks. That's why they go for the kids. They also go after our children, my children, your children, because it gives them the greatest numbers, the high numbers, where they will predictably, scientifically proven, will develop observable physical symptoms resulting from the carbon dioxide that are virtually identical to the symptoms that we were handed and told are the symptoms of Well, Omicron, I don't know the next one that's supposed to come out, or the one after that, or the planned one after that, but they're calling it COVID. Then they force the testing when the kid has the symptoms. So we take their faulty tests that have never isolated the virus. They call it COVID. See if, see if, does somebody have some time? There sure are. Let's see if these symptoms of the carbon buildup sound familiar to you. I'm sure they do. Increased eye irritation, these are COVID symptoms, oh wait, CO2 symptoms, same thing. That's why they're going after our kids and putting masks on them. Sore, dry throat, stuffy, congested, runny nose, sneezing, coughing. Sound familiar? COVID symptoms, CO2 buildup symptoms. Decreased concentration and lower test scores, headaches, dizziness, tiredness. I can't tell you how many bloody noses I have dealt with this week alone in three days. Dry throat, headache, tiredness, dizziness, fatigue, visual impairment, temporarily increased cerebral blood flow velocity. Do you know there's hearing decrease? That must be where Doc got it right. Will only approve if they have a hearing deficit. Well, suddenly we all have a hearing deficit. You know, they have something on the CDC and OSHA for the term that we are now calling an outbreak. They call it sick building syndrome. Sick building syndrome is used to describe a situation in which the occupants of a building experience acute health or comfort relate effects that seem to be linked directly to the time spent in the building, though no specific illness or cause can be identified. Building occupants complain of symptoms associated with acute discomfort, headache, eye, nose, throat irritation. It happens en masse when a building has that CO2 buildup. They are just ensuring the CO2 buildup, so our kids have these symptoms, send them for the test, and they call it COVID. That's why they're going after our children. I mentioned it to my children's physician today about the mandates, and you know what he said? Oh, is she starting that bullshit again? Just say no. She has no power to order our kids to wear masks. If you don't agree with the mandate, just send your kid without a mask. Call her bluff, is what he said. What is she going to do? Have the sheriff drive every one of those kids home? We found out she can't jail us for it. Send your kids without the masks. So that brings me to, we're all asking who stands for what. Commissioner Rushing, Commissioner Van den Bosch, thank you for the replies that you have given so quickly. We know you support us. We know you support us. So that brings me to, let's still follow the money. Our counsel has suggested that we can't fire her. She's just doing her job. Well, is she, sir? What is she really doing? What she's doing is harming every one of the poor thousands of kids that are being used as pawns in this sick game, and we are done. What her mandate does is raise CO2 levels that are unacceptable on OSHA's own website. She's raising them to CDC unacceptable levels in the workplace, for teachers, for secretaries, parapros. Oh, I will. Replace her. You need to replace her. If you say we can't fire her, I believe instead, then let's have her arrested for child abuse. I, sir, consider her a calculated predator. This is planned. She is a calculated predator, and it's not going to be with my children or theirs, I guarantee. So, sir, Mr. Fletcher, if you or your associates, I'm guessing, following the money, you might represent some people in the medical benefit. If that's true, then you step aside.
You need to finish, please.
I will finish. To you Commissioners who will not stand for what you believe and tell these people, we keep telling, when your session is up, don't waste the rest of our time. You resign now if you don't agree with us.
Carrie, your time is over.
Thank you for hearing us tonight. I'm pretty sure that a lot of us would rather be spending our time with our families and doing other things as opposed to standing up here. I am a parent of children in this county. I am also an educator in this county. I teach special ed preschool, and these little babies are forced to wear masks. Do I agree with them? No. But my hands are tied as an educator. I have to wear them, they have to wear them. These are kids that come to me with autism, with sensory processing issues, cognitive impairments already. And so when we're putting these masks on them, we are simply adding to that. So I implore that you think about these little babies. These are little babies. These are three, four, five, and six-year-olds that have to come to school with a mask on. And I'm telling you, they're not keeping them on, they're eating them. And it's really, and I'm sure there's other, there's been other educators in who have said, I'm tired of telling them to put their mask on, put your mask on, put your mask on. It wastes educational time. Our kids are already behind, and now we're allowing them to lose more time. I've been a parent since 2002, and before 2020, I had the right to parent my kids the way I wanted to parent them. I made decisions that I felt were best for them, and right now I don't feel like I have that ability. And even as an educator, as much as I would love to keep my kids home because of the mandate, I don't have that right because I'm tied to the district. So I ask, and I implore you to make a wise decision for itty-bitties all the way up to our high schoolers, because it is affecting them whether you realize it or not emotionally, socially, and cognitively. I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Larry Van Beek. Larry Van Beek.
I defer my time.
Alice Dental. Alice Dental. Raina Tilterson.
Hi. My name is Raina Tilterson. I grew up in Memphis and moved to Port Huron in 2002, and then to Kimball in 2010, where I currently reside with my husband and our son. I've never attended a Board of Commissioners meeting until today. I am here to speak about the recent mask mandate imposed on all school districts by the St. Clair County Health Department. As parents, we have the right and the responsibility to make choices for our children that we feel are in their best interest. Now, almost two years into this, our choices are being taken away again. I'm kind of mad. Before Monday, parents had choices. We could choose to send our kids to school with or without a mask. Some school districts have required masks at certain times over the past year, and in that case, we had the choice to switch school districts. My husband and I did this last year with our son. The learning environment in Yale aligned more with our beliefs, so we made that choice as his parents to move him. Everyone is able to look up the hard data on whether or not cloth or surgical masks help slow the spread of SARS-CoV-2. I've actually learned some things tonight, so thank you for people presenting with the numbers. The scientific fact is, they most certainly do not stop the passage of the respiratory droplets that spread this virus due to the size of the droplets. It is true that they can help start, stop larger spit droplets, but unless you are putting the mask on and taking it off correctly and disposing of it or washing it between every use, you're just spreading spit everywhere. That won't help either. These are children. They've not been trained on the proper way to don or doff personal protective equipment. That being said, I don't believe that science actually has anything to do with the decisions that are being made. The bottom line is this, a single person, Annette Mercantant, who was appointed by this Board of Commissioners, who were elected by this group of people, has taken it upon herself to take away our choices as parents. This disturbing dictatorial phenomenon of forcing unconstitutional mandates onto U.S. citizens is sweeping through not only our county, but our country. I have not been very involved in my local government in the past. I always vote for midterms and presidential elections, but to be honest, I didn't even know who my county commissioner was before last week. I now know that I'm in District 5, which is represented by Jeff Bone. I bet a lot of the people here tonight also learned who represents their district. And you know what else? I bet we will all remember who stood with us to help protect our right to make choices for our own children the next time we go to the polls. It is the duty of elected officials to stand up for the people that they represent. I ask today that you pass a motion to remove this overreaching mandate and stop this abuse of power by a public official using whatever means are necessary.
About time we had another guy up here. I'm an honorably discharged U.S. Marine veteran. I'm a honorably retired federal agent as well. I'm pretty proud of both of those titles, but the thing I'm most proud of is the title of dad. I'm a father. And before I knew the TV rule about having the TV in the bedroom, I ended up with six kids. Once I found out, no more kids came, but don't explain that to your children. I told you I was a Marine. Okay, anyways. I guess the biggest issue I have is that I'm not political. I've never been here before, so I'm not a political guy. I'm, I know some of you are probably sitting up there thinking, all the right-wing nuts have come out. I'm not. I'm an independent. I should be the guy that scares you, because I don't even care about half this stuff. I only care about my own kids and my own family, and if you want to get the mask or get the vaccine, if it's your choice, go ahead and get it. But why would you force it on me or my kids? That doesn't make sense to me. I've served this country most of my life. Currently, I work, and I believe in COVID, because currently I work for the U.S. Marshals doing contracts in COVID wings. I've been in, goodness, at least 100 COVID wings in six states in the last two years. COVID's real, it's killing people. But I've seen people in there with vaccines dying. Our last two guys we were watching, both felons died. They both had vaccines. So it goes against things that you guys are telling us. The, one of the first people I watched die in a COVID wing was a lady saying, hey, I wore the mask, I don't understand this, I wore the mask, I wore the mask. Three days later, she was dead. That's what she kept saying to the nurses. You know, it's, you wonder why people don't trust politicians, because there's different stories coming out on everything, and none of it's, these two are leaning into each other, one's got a mask on and one doesn't. They've been, they've been one foot from each other several times. I mean, you tell us that's not what we should be doing. It doesn't make sense. And then you're, you're all upset, people don't trust you, because nothing's standard. So that's the issue I have. A couple other things I'm going to say real quick, I know I don't got a lot of time. Some of you have seen this on Facebook, so bear with me. This is the mask that firefighters wear. I'm going to take it a step further than them, right? That's for smoke. This is the mask that people wear when they're exterminating, right? You can't see this one too good. This is the mask you buy for dust. It's even bigger than the mask that everybody's saying is going to protect our kids, this thing. This came out of a box that says not for medical use. This came out of a box that says not for viruses, and you're telling me you're protecting my six kids with this? Come on.
About 20 seconds.
More than 20 seconds, all right. So in the job I do, I have to wear masks, because I'm around a lot of COVID people, right? And I'm getting, you probably can't see them from there, I got little cuts on my lips, because I got really bad allergies and my nose runs the whole 12 hours I'm in there. My son has allergies too, as well as me. He's getting the same nose runs, he's getting all these little bumps and things around his mouth. He's been to the doctor for this. So we thought, well, we'll get an exemption for him, because he's miserable in the mask. So we went to the first doctor, and what were we told?
Please wrap it up.
It's going to take 30 days. We went to the second doctor, what did they say? It's going to take 30 days. What is that, a magical number? Because the mask.
We've used that time.
Can I just take one more minute?
We, sir, we, we have one more. So you have three minutes.
Thank you. So anyways, we tried to get the exemption, we've been told twice now, 30 days. I don't think that's a coincidence. Why are they saying, because the mask thing's going to be over in 30 days, right? That's what they're saying. So me and my wife have kind of concluded, we're either going to pull our kids out of school and homeschool on Monday, or we're going to take them to Crosswell, which I have that option, because I'm semi-retired, and it's 30 minutes from my house. I don't want to do that, because we're Yale loyal, we love Yale schools, man. But I don't know what else to do. I'm not going to make my kid go when he's miserable. It doesn't seem right to me. I guess the last thing I'll say is, my seven-year-old asked us, why does everybody think kids have created COVID? The hell would a seven-year-old think that? Come on, because you're putting them in masks and nobody else. That's why they think that. Now, I voted for somebody sitting up here. I'm your constituent, and I'm just asking you. I've spent my life serving the country, I'm asking you guys to serve us and put an end to this nonsense. This is not- This is not the time.
Okay, we'll take five minutes for a break. We'll reconvene. The next person to speak is Pam Binsfield.
I get to come up after intermission, huh? Good evening. For me, this is a black and white issue sprinkled with a little bit of gray. But for those of you that are still confused, we live in a constitutional republic. This means we, the people, elect representatives, who aren't sorry to be redundant, represent those people and act within the limitations of the Constitution. Yes, I said limitations. The Constitution of the United States limits government. Government is limited because the founders of this country were already fighting a tyrannical government. They were God-fearing Christians who knew we were created with enumerated rights that should never be taken from us. Over at least the last 60 years, our government has been stealing those rights, mainly in the name of safety. We have been complacent, a word that the county health director and many other godless communists like to use, and it infuriates them that we have had enough, as it should. And it should infuriate the rest of us to find out that we have been tricked into this compliance. As stated by the health director Mercantat in her press release, quote, "It is clear that strong recommendations are not adequate to compel the level of compliance needed to mitigate the spread of this virus, which is why a temporary order is needed until the full impacts of Omnicron are clarified." And will also use these words just stated to point out that if the full impacts of Omnicron still need to be clarified, then how is it possible for her and the county attorney to use MCL 33.2451, which can only be used when we are in imminent danger? How are we in imminent danger? And if so, how does it only pertain to people within school buildings during the hours of 7:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.? The schools have been back in session for four days now. Within that time, Marysville Public Schools is up to 20 confirmed cases of COVID. And East China School District has sent out four notifications. With the number in there, I am not sure, I am a Marysville resident. How is this possible? Everyone in that building is wearing a mask. This is to stop the looming unknown threat of Omnicron. Director Mercantat stated today during her Facebook Live session that the amount of cases of COVID are down 32% in school-aged children. And while they don't have proof of why that is, she would guess that it's because two of the school districts within the county implemented masks the two weeks before Christmas break. Well, here's some proof for everyone. In the 30 days of each month...
About 10 seconds.
Port Huron's schools have stayed consistent with their cases from September to today. They saw about 5.3 cases a day in September, 3.74 in October, 7.4 in November, and with only two weeks of school in December...or, I'm sorry. In, with only two weeks of school in December, they were seeing six cases a day, and are currently averaging 5.5 cases a day, only four days into January school year. Algonac, who also implemented the masks two weeks before Christmas, has actually increased their number of cases since implementing the mask mandate. They only had .3 cases per day in September, .6 cases in October, 1.9 cases in November, and then within two weeks of their school in December, when the masks came in, it went up to 1.17 cases a day. And five days into January, they're averaging 2.2 cases a day. According to this law, she is also to present her findings, not the findings of the CDC on a national level. The nation is not in a state of emergency. Michigan isn't even in a state of emergency. The MDHHS is only strongly recommending masks in schools. Her findings also include the ways viruses spread. Shouldn't we be in a constant state of imminent danger, then? There are viruses everywhere, and have been since Adam and Eve and the apple. It's been nearly three years, and we're still waiting on the peer-reviewed studies and clinical trials that prove any of her findings. Stating there is evidence isn't enough, yet here we are in imminent danger. And use of masks have been proven to have no discernible impact on slowing the spread of viruses. Let's ignore the actual studies done on this and go right to the notice on the packaging. Director Mercantat is also putting pressure on the local area pediatricians. In an email, she stated, "And while not," and I quote, "Has she instructed a medical office to deny requests for exemptions outright? She has guided them on the best practice and current data on masking risks," end quote. Whatever she has said to these doctors was enough to convince them to refuse to even make appointments with patients concerning mask exemptions, and are telling patients that as of yesterday, it was illegal to do so. So now she believes she has the authority to direct the care of our children, our children, not hers, and it's best to make note of that, within their schools as well as how their doctors treat them. In case you believe this is in her power as well, you'd be wrong. It is this board's responsibility to make sure that you and the people who work for you are acting within the limitations of the Constitution. Many of you up there are failing. This isn't anti-mask, anti-vax, this is pro-freedom.
You got about...
If you want to wear a mask, or get 1,000 shots, or put a bucket on your head and dance in the streets, I hope you have the time of your life doing it. However, no one gets to tell everyone else they must do the same. Thank you.
I'm going to apologize ahead of time on this name. Nazee Hussain? Was I close? No? All right, Nazee, all right.
Good evening. I wasn't going to speak, but I figured something came to mind while I'm listening. I grew up working in a family business, and I remember one time my dad fired this individual, and I questioned him, I'm like, "Why'd you fire this guy? He seemed to be pretty decent." He said, "Son, he's been on my mind every day. He's causing problems, he doesn't do what he's told, and he's just taking up my space in my mind where I can't take care of my business. So whenever you got an employee like that, you have to let them go." Sounds like you guys got an employee like that. Make the decision.
Christine Weston. Christine Weston.
Like many others, this is the first time I've addressed the Board of Commissioners. But first of all, I want to say this mask mandate is completely absurd. The department, the Health Department nor Dr. Mercantat are, they're not elected officials. I first want to point out two things. One, being there is no proof masks work, and two, there is proof that masks are harmful to wear for long lengths of time. They cut down our children's oxygen levels, which they need, oxygen to help them think and function daily. They also force the children to rebreathe their carbon dioxide all day, which also deteriorates the function of their brains, not to mention all the bacteria in the mask that grows even more from the humidity from the child breathing in it all day, which can lead to bacterial pneumonia, which has already been brought up. It is common sense that lack of oxygen is harmful for anyone, especially for children who are still developing and growing. I am getting so sick of our children being exposed to this fear-mongering political agenda from a virus that has a 99% survival rate, and over a 99% survival rate for children and adolescents. I have been in the medical field for 22 years, and I work with doctors daily. There is absolutely no proof that a mask stops the spread or transmission of COVID. Dr. Fauci himself has said that masks, unless they are form-fitted N95 masks, do not do anything to prevent COVID. Another question I would ask is if vaccinated people are the majority of our hospitalized, then why would we think a mask would protect our children when a vaccine can't? The physician, Dr. Angelique Co-Cot-Zeez, I can't say her name, who discovered this new variant, Omnicron, has come out and said that the symptoms of it are the most mild than any other variant. Symptoms of this variant are just like the flu: scratchy throat, dry cough, maybe some achiness that lasts for 24 to 48 hours. If we...wait, I'm...sorry, I lost my place. Symptoms of this variant, okay. If we don't mask our children during cold and flu season, why are we doing it for this virus? Again, I ask that the schools and the commissioners stop using our children for their fear-mongering political agendas.
About 20 seconds, please.
There are other school districts in Michigan who are actually following the science and not imposing this ridiculous mask mandate. Our old governor, Governor Whitmer, came out and said that she is not mandating masks at this time. I suggest we all do the same, especially with our children. Thank you.
Tim Keller. Tim Keller.
Chairman Bohm, County Commissioners, thank you. My name is Tim Keller. A fact of life: All political power is inherent in the people. All political power is inherent in the people. I'll come back to that later. I want to point out something. The Michigan Supreme Court struck down the terrible 1945 emergency law. They said it's unconstitutional. It gave, it's where Whitmer drove the bus through the loophole wide enough for that bus, and we were the ones that got thrown under it. The court decided in that case, the governor does not have power to exercise emergency actions past 28 days in an actual emergency. At that point, it's up to the legislature to decide what happens in an emergency. If the governor does not have that power to exercise, what makes Dr. Mercantat think she has it? Not only that, and this is where I would like to direct my comments, not just to Dr. Mercantat, but also to the legal counsel retained by this county commission. On September 29, 2021, at 10:04 a.m., Governor Whitmer signed into law the budget. In that budget, in the handwritten copy, you could see where she line-itemed vetoes on the same page where she left in place Section 250. The director, or a local health officer, shall not issue or enforce any orders or other directives that require an individual in this state who is under the age of 18 to wear a face mask or face covering. You have advised this commission and the director of the Health Department that because the funds released to her already have been spent, the state legislature can't do anything to enforce this law. I have a question for you. What part about "shall not" are we going to split hairs over? If you will not honor the law as written specifically directed to this local director of a health department, if you will advise them not to honor the law that says she shall not do this, why should we honor anything that she does? Now, I'm not calling for lawlessness. What I'm pointing out is, advising lawlessness, that ought to be grounds enough for your dismissal. And with the... Elected officials and governing officials, like an unelected bureaucrat, Dr. Mercantat, who swore an oath to uphold...
About 20 seconds.
Who swore to uphold the U.S. Constitution and the state constitution...
Thank you.
That law, right here, is based on that Constitution she swore to uphold. She's in violation of contract by violating her oath of office. How do I know she's had to take an oath? I'm a teacher. Every teacher who has a teaching certificate in the state of Michigan, whether they realize it or not, on their certificate, it says they swore to take an oath to uphold the state and the U.S. Constitution. She violated that. Reverend C.L. Bryant summed up very clearly the core root of the problem here. Government is not God. Reverend C.L. Bryant is a bright individual. He summed it up well. Our state constitution makes the same observation. Our state constitution begins with a preamble that says, "We, the people of the state of Michigan, grateful to Almighty God for the blessings of freedom, and earnestly desiring to secure these blessings undiminished to ourselves and our..." To ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this constitution." And I've already quoted from the next sentence in the Constitution. In Article 1, which is the Declaration of Rights in our state constitution, Article 1, Section 1 says, "All political power is inherent in the people." Don't forget it. Don't forget it when it comes time to the primaries this summer. Don't forget it in November. There are two individuals here in this commission who have shown repeatedly that based on principles that are found in our state and U.S. Constitution, based on those principles, they are champions of the rights of the people. Five others have a choice tonight. They could show us that they stand for the rights of the people, and they could either fire Merkentant for violation of contract, or they could make it very clear to us with the resolution that they will not renew her contract when it comes due in June for review. They could do that, or we, the people, exercising the political power inherent in us, can remove those who refuse to do it, and you need to do that. All political power is inherent in the people. Don't forget it. Stand up to the nonsense.
Dawn Schaefer? Dawn Schaefer?
My son is Blake. He goes to Port Huron Northern, or did, I should say. I have pulled my child from the school district. He was mandated to wear a mask all of December. I chose to keep him home because masking him has made him unable to be a social person at home. When he would get home from school, he would immediately go to sleep. He would sleep through dinner, through homework, through family time, and I wouldn't see the kid. So masking children does not work for all of them. They are breathing their own CO2, which has been proven. Not only are kids growing, their brains are still developing, they need increased oxygen, not decreased oxygen. Their heart rates are higher, their respirations are higher than adults. They need more oxygen, not less. So masking my son has been terrible for him. So I chose to keep him home all of December. I was told he was going to be marked unexcused absent, and I still chose to keep him home and face a possible truancy. He is failing in his grades, and now because they've mandated masks, Merkentant has, I am pulling him from the district. He will be doing a school of my choice, which he excelled at in 8th grade when I pulled him, and I will pull him every damn time. So virtual enrollment was not an option. He was not able to. He was given no reasonable accommodations to support him. The school district did not reach out to him, his teachers did not reach out to him, nobody supported my child. And virtual ended for Port Huron Northern, December 17th. So there's no virtual option now either for him. I have talked to the superintendent or the assistant principal. He stated, "Oh, if he wears a mask a few days, he'll get used to it." No, he won't. He wore it for weeks and didn't get used to it. It's not getting used to it. He cannot do without oxygen. I wear a mask, I wear an N95. It is not foolproof. You can still get COVID wearing it. It is fitted, yes, but it states right on the packaging, and I talked about that last time I was here. I brought the box. It says, "Does not prevent infection or disease." N95. These kids are going with surgical masks that are not meant to be worn the way they're wearing them. All this stuff that's going on has been under emergency use authorization. My child's not an experiment, and he's not going to be an experiment. So you all can either sit in the seats and just stare at me and not listen, or you can do your jobs. You can reprimand Merkentant and do what needs to be done, or your seats will be taken.
Hello again. I can't believe we're at this again. Just to reiterate everyone's points here, I kind of hate to repeat what they've said, but we've said this all in September, and nothing's changed. We're going backwards. So apparently, we need to talk about it again. I love the comments that say that Merkentant is a coward, because that's exactly the word I use to describe her. And her not being here tonight to sit here and face us proves it. Now, I'm not someone who casually calls for anyone to lose their job. However, the actions taken by Merkentant during the so-called COVID pandemic have proven she is unfit for the job she holds. You've seen tonight, you've heard it all. Her actions have had a seriously negative impact on every citizen of this county, most especially our children, by disrupting their education for almost two years now, and counting. She has not been held accountable at all. So please tell me, why is it that every K-12 student is required to wear a mask in order to go to class, not for any extracurricular activities? Now, in Yale, apparently at the junior high and senior high level, COVID only gets you between 7:30 and 2:22. The elementary level, it only gets you between 8:35 and, I guess it's 3:45? Come on. Why are the children in the surrounding counties of Santa La, Acapulco, and Macomb still allowed to breathe freely? Why are all the pediatricians in St. Clair County suddenly no longer allowed to issue mask exemptions for any health condition other than speech and hearing issues? Despite many requests from citizens over the past year, why hasn't Merkentant provided any studies to support any of her orders? And again, she's not here to support anything tonight. You, the board, asked Merkentant to rescind her quarantine order in September with a threat of termination if she did not comply. She refused. Mr. Fletcher told you that she could not be fired for doing her job. She wasn't doing her job when she refused to obey her superiors. You let her get away with it. Exactly who is running this county? There is no science behind this order. It is purely a political one. So to Kevin Miller, you can't separate politics from a public health order that is nothing but political. Doctors are not credentialed in pathogen protection, yet the county medical officer supposedly has the authority to issue orders requiring the citizens of this county to cover our faces with a germ-ridden cloth that create health hazards.
Your name, please? Thank you.
These masks provide absolutely no protection against an airborne virus. At the October 7th board meeting, I suggested the board host a public discussion between the Health Department and exposure scientists, who actually are credentialed in pathogen protection, to both advise and educate on proper measures that are effective to battle COVID and other airborne viruses, to no avail. And now here we are, back on the same path that was supposed to slow the spread in 15 days. Today, we are now on day number 660. You, the board, are continuing to allow the health officer to issue nonsensical public health orders that do nothing to fight this virus, yet pose great danger to our health. At meeting after meeting, Merkentant has been requested to provide the data she bases her decisions on by many, many citizens. To date, she has still not provided anything more than, "We rely on the published data." What published data? We're still waiting to see it. Apparently, it must be on the website now, so we'll have to check it out. She has even admitted that neither she nor her team have time to read all the information that is out there in regards to this virus. To quote another citizen at a previous meeting, "Isn't it her job? If we citizens can make the time to do the research in addition to our full-time jobs and managing households, a doctor who has paid a six-figure income to serve the citizens of St. Clair County has the time to research beyond the propaganda she constantly doles out over and over and over again." So my question for you, St. Clair County Board of Commissioners, is what are you going to do about it? This has to be taken care of. We can't keep going on like this. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'd rather be at work tonight, but I had to take the night off again to come here and do this again with you all. I'm really sick of the threat of us going virtual as a reason to do this mask mandate because that's not how this works. It's a public school. Figure it out. You've had two years to figure it out, right? Two years. Figure it out. You were offering bonuses for teachers, well, the school boards were, for testing in the beginning of all this, so offered bonuses for other things. I don't know. Figure it out. They've had two years. But we can't ask them because none of the superintendents are here, right? No one from any of the Board of Educations are here. I wonder if any of them filled in for any of the teachers or any of the staff that was missing. They went and went to the schools, and they talked to the teachers, and they talked to the students, and got everybody's opinion about what was going on, what they could do better, what they couldn't do better. That was what we were told at the Board of Education meeting in Port Huron. But did any of them actually work a shift for these kids? I'm just curious. Beyond that, I emailed all of the board. I did hear a response from one person, but I did send it 24 hours before. I did not, was not able to get to it until then. I was able to look at that response and, as I was walking up here to get a, be outside with the sign. So I kind of scanned it over, wasn't sure if I was gonna talk tonight or not, because I didn't have time to actually look at it, and I don't want to come at somebody with something other than that. I respectfully take the response, but one thing I noticed in here is they were not comfortable with asking her to resign or firing her because there was no one to replace her. It has to be a doctor. That, that's what I took from it. Remind you, it was a quick, I've read it a couple times while I've been sitting here trying to place it all together, because I do not, I respect this person, I do not want to go at them. But you have nobody in place. You have to have a doctor in place to take over her position, and if there's no doctor in place, then a lot of people are gonna go without the other vaccines, the other healthcare, the other services that, that they need, right? So they're worried about that population. I am too. That's not, that's not the point. Point is, she's not doing her job. It's pure child abuse. This has gotta stop. So tonight, we've all asked you, can somebody yield me a little bit of time, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm asking you, we've all come at you guys tonight. We need to know where you stand. You are also citizens of this county. Could you take three minutes to tell us each where you stand right now, so we know? Because I was willing to give y'all grace until tonight. Tonight, something has to change. I don't care if you make her rescind, or fire her, or whatever it takes. I want to hear from you tonight. We all want to hear from you tonight. Figure it out. I'm not doing this anymore. I'm not.
Alina Golf?
Take your time, breathe, and get the microphone down. We'll listen to you. We'll listen to you. Take your time.
My algebra teacher had previously made a program where her students, algebra and pre-algebra, could come during lunch to come get some extra help. Yesterday, she informed everyone that she wouldn't be doing that because lunch is our only time we have a mask break or breathing break, but you can still go with her to get some one-on-one extra. An hour and band, an hour and 20 minutes playing an instrument. I play a rather large instrument where I need more breath for most notes. Putting on a mask in the little between places we have, whether that be counting a lot of measures or having our instructor talk, limits sort of my breathing. In 7th grade, I had struggled with taking more of those deep breaths in between that I needed to play my instrument, and we had, went to the doctor, and she had referred me an inhaler and to try and take, more or less, take my mask off when I can. We had, in 7th grade, we had to put on coverings for the bells of all the instruments, and the percussionist needed to wear a mask. Most clarinets in my 7th grade class complained that the high notes were difficult to play, and when my teacher let them take it off, they all said that it would better because the air would come through more clearly. I had changed from an alto sax to a baritone sax that year. It was larger, and it needed more breath for the low notes and the high notes. By the end of the hour, I, I struggled to breathe, and I struggled to breathe with, In my 5th hour this year, which is ancient history, most people goof around putting masks on their heads, or I see them hanging off their ears. There is this one boy in my class who has a visible mesh mask, and my teacher really does nothing about it. She more or less doesn't care about it. And I have one friend, and both of her parents smoke, but when I sit next to her, the scent of the smoke usually is stuck on her mask, and having the constant cigarette smoke scent isn't a pleasure to deal with, because when, even when I sit next to her in two of the classes that I have with her, it gives me a headache myself, but I can begin to imagine how she manages, but she does, without taking it off. In the hallways of my school, I usually hear teachers yelling down the hallway for people to lift, lift the masks above their nose and, and/or usually actually get one from the office. But the minute the bells ring and people get on the bus, and there's this one group of people who get off my bus, and I'll look out the window and I'll watch masks being ripped off their face and throwing them on the ground, leaving them there for them to just get new masks and, and go on the bus again, despite my bus is being public transport I don't have anything else.
Hi. My husband spoke earlier. He's the Army veteran who is very passionate about this. I am a mother of eight. I am a five-time deployment survivor. My husband was literally two seconds and two inches from dying for our freedom. One of those freedoms is the freedom of choice. We have lived in Georgia, between my husband and I, we have lived in Georgia, Texas, Ohio, Hawaii, Colorado, and South Korea, but we chose to chose to come home to Michigan and we chose, for Huron area, to call home for our kids. He's ready to roll up. He's sick of this. He's ready to go south. He's ready to go to an open state. He's ready to go to Santa Clara. He doesn't care. He wants our kids to breathe and have the choice. I'm not. And we argue about it. And I am not running away to find a better land. I am ready to run for the offices to make this land of St. Clair County better. Three of my oldest kids have, they are on their eighth school. And I'm not moving them. They're future business owners. They have dreams. They can make this county amazing. They want to be leaders. They are amazing kids. But they aren't going to wear masks. 2022 is my year to use my voice. I am always the one standing behind my husband, letting him voice because he's very passionate. Or I'm the one keeping him at bay, calming him. This year, I have become the PTA Vice President at my kid's elementary. I have eight, eight kids, literally in every level. We have a preschooler. We have two elementaries. We have a middle schooler. We have three high schoolers. And I have one that is out of school. Out of all of us, the eight that are in the house, none of us have gotten COVID. The one child of mine who has gotten COVID, he's 20. He is security officer at Chrysler. He wears a mask every night on his midnight shift. He got COVID. I am not going to be standing up here to throw out statistics, numbers, because everybody's got tons of them for you.
About 20 seconds.
Yes, sir. I'm going to share a quote from a man that shares the same name as my youngest child, Abraham Lincoln. America will never be destroyed from the outside. If we falter and lose our freedoms, it will be because we destroyed ourselves. So I'm asking you that you do whatever you need to do to stand up for our kids, the kids of our county, and who are the future of this county. Do whatever it is right. Let our freedom, let our freedom of us parents return and let the freedoms of our children come back to them too. Thank you.
Dan Kresh.
My name is Dan Kresh, resident of St. Clair County. I voted for Mr. Bohm. Uh, I do think that you all should be very proud of the people who you represent. These people are passionate. These people are intelligent and they're proud. Um, see well the people in the crowd. Great information. If this board has not caught on to how we feel, uh, to what is going on and the difference between white and right and wrong, then there's a question there. I don't have any facts. I don't have any statements. I've got questions. One is, most of you as council members, you've been sitting here for three and a half hours without masks on. You're expecting your kids, our kids, to do that. That's hypocritical? The doctor not being here, I'd like to ask her, what percentage of the county has actually had COVID? Are we at herd immunity yet? Have we made it past a point where we can relax some standards? Have we approached this in a clinical manner? Will you be posting the letter that you had earlier online? And will you be reading the comments that come back from that letter as far as thumbs ups and thumbs downs? That should be a pretty democratic way of understanding how your constituents feel about this matter. I don't understand how, if the doctor is, uh, reporting to you, why she's not mandated to be here. It's a mandate. You, she belongs to you. She reports to you. A couple of questions came up during the last break. Uh, this is my first council meeting. I'm not familiar with any of the processes, any of this. Uh, one question was, when will we be seeing the outcome of your vote? That seems to be pretty important to your constituents. And the other question that came up was, a few people were talking about a recall. Has it come to this? Thank you.
Moving on to item four, updates. St. Clair County Department of Veteran Affairs, 2021 Year-End Report.
It's just a written report this evening.
Great.
Make a motion to receive and file.
Or.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any conceptual initiatives tonight?
None this evening.
No old business. Moving on to new business, item AA, Health Department Discussion. And Dave, since you made the motion.
I have a couple of motions that I want to make, uh, to address a few things. The one is, I'd like a motion to start a committee to review our St. Clair County Health Department and her office. And have that committee formed as soon as possible.
Can you repeat that, please?
I would support that.
Can you repeat your, your motion so we can get it in the record properly?
To start a committee to renew or review our St. Clair County Health Department, uh, Health Director's Office.
The position?
Yes.
The director position?
No, you're, you're talking about?
The Health Director, not the health position itself. And we can start discussion as soon as you allow me to.
Okay.
Yeah, Duke second.
Do you have a second?
I still don't understand what you're saying. Start a committee to renew or review.
Review the St. Clair County Health Director.
Correct. You said department, which is why I was confused.
Health Director, position.
Review.
And it's review, not renew.
And I have.
He said renew or review.
I meant review.
He means review.
Okay.
Definitely not renew because that's coming up in June anyway. We have the authority. If we make this committee, we can come back to this board and I'm starting a discussion. If that's okay.
Will you have a second from Duke?
Yes, a second.
So, wait, Chris, are you all set?
Yes, to start a committee to review the Health Director.
Correct.
Thank you. Continue.
Because we always have the authority as county commissioners to renew that contract early, rescind it, because she's an at-will employee. For whatever reason, we decide to do that, we have that authority. And then we can make it either an at-will with no reason or with reason, if you look at the contract. We would re. We have a lot of, a lot of work to go here. Um, and we can review that at any time. So and we would definitely ask our corporate counsel to assist us in that, to make sure because potentially if we fire her, uh, that, that, that was potentially my intent tonight. I'm not going to do that on numerous reasons. One, I think it would do damage to the county because without a Health Director in position, the health order still stays in place. We cannot remove the health order, just so you know. And Gary Fletcher can verify that. The county commissioners have no authority to remove a public health order. You're right. We do have the authority to remove the director, but if we do that, the order still stands. Only she has that authority currently, being our director. Uh, she can decide to do that tomorrow if she wants, within a week, if she believes the caseloads or whatever she's getting her information from would advise that we remove the mask. But that's completely her call. That runs until January 28th. And I definitely was, and I've talked with the commissioners and have given me, and I'll stress, I don't want anybody to try to get a vote prior to an office, uh, prior to a meeting, because we would be in violation of open meetings back. I do respect every one of their opinions and it would be detrimental to maybe our seniors if we were to remove her because then there's, uh, services that are rendered to us from the state of Michigan that we would lose without a Health Director in place. Uh, talking to Carrie, and correct me if I'm wrong, if we decide to remove her from office within a month, two months, or not renew her contract in June, well, that will be part of the discussion of the committee. If we decide to do that, it's going to take a minimum 30 days to start the discussion. And the state of Michigan, for every 83 counties, has to approve that the Health Director for each county has the certifications to be a Health Director. And our committee will be discussing numerous things. I want to go back to where we were before, where we have a Health Director for a Health Officer, a Doctor, and back going to have an Administrator, which most counties have. She currently sits in two positions and gets paid two salaries. Uh, until this pandemic came up, and I'm not going to say she doesn't, hasn't done some very good work for this county. I think she's been very wrong in this pandemic, but that's my own opinion. And each one of us can voice that opinion. And I could ramble on and on, but I definitely want the committee and I want to have it as quick as possible and then come up with recommendations for this board. So potentially by March, maybe even in February, we can come back with the recommendation.
How many people do you want on the committee?
Bare minimum, me. Uh, three, I think we do it.
But do we want somebody from the, from the, we have the Health Board.
Health Advisory Board.
A Health Advisory Board?
I would recommend Lisa. She's already sits on that. I would not recommend somebody that works or is Dr. Merkentan on that board. I think you'd get a biased opinion. That wouldn't be helpful. That's my own opinion, though.
Well, none of the, none of the people on the Health Advisory Board work.
Right.
We appoint the.
We appoint.
We appoint the Health Advisory Board.
And they wouldn't comment, there are three, so we could.
We could do Lisa, Dave and Dave. You guys have obviously been really involved in this. I mean, I'm fine with that. If you guys want to do that, and then you get Carrie and Gary. I didn't mean to speak out of turn, but I guess I will. Uh, yeah, I want to know what all the options are. So if, if you were to make a motion to fire, you know, is that putting the county at risk? Uh, contract renewals up in June. Um, if we decide not to do it, so be it. Change in position, to your point. Before, we had, uh, had a Health Department Director. Um, I think up to pre the pandemic, I think we would agree that the Health Department, uh, the budgets, things were run well, so on and so forth. Um, censorship, you know, whatever, just to, just to really to let, let me get a grasp on what all our options are. And I'd like you guys to get together, obviously, sooner than later. Um, this recent mandate, I'm, I'm not a mandate guy. When this came down for the schools, you know, to me, let the schools do their own governance. If they decide they want to do it, just like they did before. Elgin Act felt that they had a problem, so they put the mask mandate in, whether you like it or not, or hate it, so be it. But it was left up to the individual school districts. Uh, Port Aaron was the same. I know some schools are very adamant against it. I had actually spoke to the superintendent of East China Schools, uh, where both my kids went and I reside down in East China. They are definitely against it. Uh, school superintendent, school board president, um, like I said, to, the, the mandate thing is, that's not my MO. Um, I don't necessarily know, we have the ability to, this board does not have the ability, correct me if I'm wrong, Gary, to rescind a mandate. We can, we can say we want her to rescind that, but we do not have that authority to do that.
You cannot, only she can terminate or rescind that order.
But we can request it. We can request her to.
Which we've done that before, though. You know, we did that before. And I, and, and I truly think in that, and I know this isn't going to be, you know, um, popular, but she truly thinks she's doing the right thing. I had spoke to her, you know? And I totally disagree with her and respectfully disagree. And I know Dave, I think you had spoke to her and the same thing.
Everybody, I think everybody.
Yeah. And if, if I'm talking out of shop here, but I don't think this board, and I mean, I let everybody speak their opinion. I don't know if anybody's a mandate person on this, um, on board and feeling anything different than I am, that we need to let this decision to, you know, up to the schools, but.
If I could, Jeff, um, with this motion I made, do I need that for final action so we can take, get this, so I would like to add final action to this so we can get the committee started immediately.
Are you good with that?
Yes.
But I, I think with the, with some of the, I tried to get information from her during the meeting of actual numbers of the quality of the masks. And I know that, because I wear the N95s during calls and, and they have to be fitted to our face and we have, those are effective. But I don't think, especially after I dropped my son off, what he's wearing, what he's wearing and all his buddies are wearing to school, that could save, stop anything. Especially when he pulled it out of his pocket after it's been in the pocket of his coat since the last time he had to wear it. I don't know if it was ever washed the first time. So it's disgusting. Truly disgusting what he's wearing. But his wife's, his, his mother's probably going to be mad at me if she's watching this.
Doing his laundry.
Yeah. But I, I just, and I do PPE training for the fire department and these masks aren't, they're not, they're not PPE, especially these homemade. I couldn't imagine these elementary schools because she's got a pink one and the other girl's got a purple. Let's trade for a few hours. That sounds healthy. And I can see that happening because I know all the kids. I knew how I was.
You're going to take a vote shortly, but I've got one more point and I'm probably done. And I did ask, uh, Gary Fletcher on this when we met with Dr. Merkentan. The Michigan State Constitution gives her the authority to issue personal health orders. It also gives only her the authority to enforce it. By giving this to the schools, they do not have the authority. They cannot do, and correct me if I'm wrong, they cannot issue misdemeanors. They cannot do fines. If somebody is not in compliance, they then have to contact Dr. Merkentan to do the enforcing. She's already stated when she did this in many of our meetings, she is not going to enforce any of it. She doesn't have the resources, but she put it in place. And part of me, if you're going to do it, and I was going to make a motion, which I'm not going to tonight, that any future, uh, per, uh, public health orders have to have a start and a finish according to the state laws to where it has to be enforceable. You can't just take the first part of it. So if I'm correct on that, only she has the authority of enforcing.
Yeah, it, it's her responsibility to enforce it, but I think Kevin Miller's, uh, letter and Dr. Merkentan's, the end of hers, uh, made it clear that the school, the school superintendents, that's what Kevin Miller said, acted in lockstep with her through this process. And I think all of us sitting here know what's going on, which is the quarantine rules in the schools are a big problem because if the schools can't, if, if the kid that's sitting here and they're all masked, if he or she gets COVID and they're all masked, only the kid with COVID has to quarantine, the rest don't. They can keep school going. They fall below some, just let me, let me finish slightly to you. And the, and, and obviously what Kevin Miller indicated is the issue here is keeping the minimum numbers that they have to meet in schools so they don't have to go virtual because they don't want to go virtual. So to me, I mean, we all know how COVID affects kids and it's not much. And the issue really is, in my opinion, the court, if the quarantine rules were different, we wouldn't even be talking about this. That's my opinion. But the schools are left, to answer your question, the schools are left to enforce it.
But they can't legally enforce it because they can't, and I ask you this, they can't do misdemeanors and fines.
No, they can't. But what they can do is, they have the right to manage their schools and to decide whether the kids will have to wear masks or not. They could say to Dr. Merkentan, we're not doing it. We're not doing it. And, uh, we don't think you have the authority to do this and we're not doing it. Or we're incapable of doing it or whatever. And then it, then it would, then it would be up to her to decide what she's going to do.
But the schools, and I think all of us are on board with this, the schools already have that authority. And that's what we supported, that it should be left up to the school. You look at our, uh, resolution that we drafted before and it was approved. We do not support the mandate. And I myself.
The resolution said that.
I'm talking, what?
That was in the resolution.
Yes, correct. And Jeff was called by Dr. Merkentan. I was not made aware of it until just, just lately before. She did not contact any of the commissioners that I'm aware of. I know I was not. She also didn't contact the Health Advisory Board. We can meet this death, death, and I can ramble for a lot because I got, we all have a lot of feelings about this. Um, but if anybody's got more to say, we'll get this discussed in the committee and then come back to.
Well, and I, so my process is, the contract's up in June. We're going to go out and look for, we're going to go out and ask for, advertise for a position. And that takes time, right? I mean, you don't, so if we could get this wrapped up in sometime in March, I mean, we're already, right, we're pushing, the first week's going to be gone in January. Through February, get your, if you have your meetings, figure out what we're going to do. You're going to put something out. That, that just leaves us March, April, May. That's three months. And we're, we're looking for a doctor. That's three months, and we're, we're looking for a doctor. So I don't, they seem to be in pretty high demand today, so I think sooner, sooner or better to get this.
I would like to have something before this board by February. I think that's very easy to do, the standards for that position and the qualifications, that's pretty much all we have to find out.
Gary, can you talk to us about the process?
Sure. So once this committee decides how they would like to move forward, as Commissioner Rushing mentioned, there are currently two positions. There is a public health officer and your medical officer. Currently, Dr. Merkentant serves both. So if going forward, you choose to separate that out to two positions again, the county had that prior to bringing Dr. Merkentant on. Both of those positions, once a candidate is selected, we have to submit that individual with all of their credentials to the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services for their approval. There's specific requirements by the state of Michigan that each of those positions have to have, different degrees and credentials. I, I don't think it's that difficult of a process to get it approved, but it does say it takes a minimum of thirty days for their approval. So we'll want to make sure that if we are going to go out and advertise and post for the position, we would want to do that sooner rather than later.
On that, Dr. Merkentant, if we put it out and come up with the format that we want to do this, that the board approves, Dr. Merkentant is more than capable of submitting for either one of those positions while her contract is still in place, correct?
Correct. She could apply for.
She still wants to, if we decide to go as two positions, she could apply for one of those two positions. After we, this board decides to open it up.
That, that's where I think putting the committee together, I mean, we can throw eighty-seven different scenarios out tonight. I think getting all you guys in the room, you're going to formulate a bunch of questions, you're going to get a bunch of this stuff flushed out, that committee's going to spend some time, and then bring, bring that back, you know, this, you know, what's this, what's that.
Well, and honestly, maybe a work session, because I have a lot of questions, and if these things need to be in, because I wasn't part of, you know, the, bringing Dr. Merkentant on. I don't know how the contract is, or to split it into the two. I have the, the rules of, of how to form a local health department pulled up right now. So I have lots and lots of questions, so even if there's a, a chance to do that, so that.
I'm busy tomorrow, but anybody who wants to, like a workshop, if you want to do it with three board members, so it isn't a quorum, I'm open anytime you tell me what day you want me here, I'll be here. And work it out, whoever the schedules can match that.
I can coordinate that first meeting.
So the, the committee's going to be the three of you?
No, it's the Dave.
Lisa and Dave and Dave.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Who's the chair of the committee?
I have to give you a chair.
Don't need it?
It's not a, not that.
So I would, I would like to say that I think we're really dealing with two issues. We have the issue of mandate, whether we're for or against, and we have the issue of how it was communicated and rolled out. And I think this, this issue of communication, no matter who is in that seat, it needs to be resolved, and we need to have the accountability in place of a guideline or a best practice, because while we were not blindsided, we were not given much notice that this was coming out.
I, I do.
And as, as my job is communication, this was fumbled, and I've had that conversation with Dr. Merkentant, and she's taken responsibility for that, but this is, I think, the second time. It could have been handled better, and so we need to get some safeguards, some stop gaps in place.
A little bit of oversight.
So that we can be better informed for our constituents, should something like this come up again.
That would be easily, and we'll get the committee, but just to be harsh about it, that could be easily grounds for insubordination, that's communication. If this happens again, and there's zero communication with the commissioners, or the, the health board, or the school board, because a lot of superintendents were just given the information that it was going to be issued, rather than an actual discussion to see their input on it. We got a lot of smart people out there on the school boards. Their input would have been very valuable to her to weigh in making a mask mandate.
And, and I think that that's what we're talking about, is getting this better played out, so that decisions aren't necessarily made in a silo.
As late as three o'clock today, I was still getting new information on how this all came to be, and, and we can't operate like that. And I kind of thought we had this handled after the last, when we ended up doing the resolution, after the last public health order, that this, the communication would stay open. And while I know that the authority rests with her in her position to put it in order, I was under the impression that should an order become necessary again, that there would be open communication prior to that happening, so that it wasn't, you know, an hour prior to Facebook knowing. And, and that was, that was hard, and I've had those conversations privately with Dr. Merkentant as well, but that was a, you know, I thought that was handled last fall. I didn't expect this at this point.
Any other discussion? If the clerk will take the roll, please.
Right, exactly. Commissioner McConnell?
We got a motion.
Call for a vote.
Yes, call for a vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes. Item B.
If I could, one more thing, Lisa, please, while we're talking about this, I do have one other motion, because I think it's important. I think that I will, I don't know if it needs to be a motion, but I want to vote. If there was any one of these commissioners, because they want to know where we stand, I want to make a motion, did any of you, or any of the commissioners, support a mask mandate?
That's not really.
I'm sorry. Would you want to ask her to repeal the mask mandate instead? I know she won't, but at least we can.
Individually, you can just chime in, it doesn't even have to be a vote.
Well, I'd rather have something official.
That's not a motion that I can.
A poll.
I do not support the mask mandate.
I do not support the mask mandate.
I don't support the mask mandate. I support the local government's taking care of their own. I think the schools should.
I agree.
I think the schools need to take care of their own. They have the local control, they see the kids, they know the testing, they have the control on those.
Okay.
The feedback that I've received is not going to be popular, but I'm in a different district than what's represented here. They actually wanted it to go further. So, so it's a, it's a different, it's a different, so.
Okay. So you know where we stand.
Well, I didn't get the, get my vote in. I vote definitely against the mask mandate. Well, you know where I stand, but definitely against the mask mandate, and I'm also in support of rescinding the mask mandate.
All right. Item A, the 2022 Service Provider Agreement with Blue Water Safe Horizons.
I'd move this to be sent to the full board.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, Service Provider Agreement with the Council on Aging.
Move to full board.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll just give it a, a minute to let people clear out.
You can, we can do your thing.
Okay. Item D, the 2022 Service Provider Agreement Housing Matters.
Move, make a motion to send to the full board.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did you do C, Lisa?
We didn't get C.
Oh, sorry. Can we finish D and then go back?
Okay.
All right, so all in favor of D?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, ser, item C, 2022 Service Provider Agreement Hunter Hospitality House.
Make a motion to send to the full board.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item E, 2022 Service Provider Agreement Lake Shore Legal Aid.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item F, 2022 Service Provider Agreement for Year and Housing Commission.
Move it to go to full board.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, 2022 Service Provider Agreement Public Guardians Office.
Make a motion to send to the full board.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any other human services matters?
None.
We were all emailed the health department December points of interest.
Make a motion to receive and file.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to receive and file packets.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
Support. Meeting adjourned.
That's, I'm going to give you my answer, he can give you, answer is legal, but we got meetings to get done, but that's your decision, and it will be Dr. Merkentant's. I can advise you on my personal, that if the entire senior class of Yale, and I want to make this real short, decided we're not wearing masks, then you'd have, somebody's going to have to take a step forward, but that's up to the parents, I'm not going to, you know, that's up to you guys, it's not.
Well, they're sending our kids home, so I have one down here, that's really not the right of the school.
We need to continue the meeting, please.
Are you unable to vote to rescind, or are you unwilling to vote to rescind?
Unable.
Unable. We don't have the power to rescind.
All we can do is ask her. She's already told us she will.
We already did. We, we've done that.
Resolutions in ready.
We're in a crisis here, and it's not a medical crisis. We're getting our liberty stripped from us in front of you.
We cannot rescind it, and we do have a committee to get together, and we will be making a recommendation for her position.
Do we have say in that?
What?
Do we have say in the committee?
That would be Dave, myself, Lisa, we're going to have a workshop, and we're going to come back sometime in February with recommendations that we can take forward. We cannot rescind health orders. No board of county commissioners throughout the state of Michigan can rescind public health orders.
Ladies and gentlemen, with respect, even if, even if she won't do it, I know you've recommended it before, and she didn't listen. Are you willing to recommend it again? And if she doesn't listen, and she doesn't listen, I mean.
We did that tonight, and we also have it in the resolution. We took a vote.
Okay, so you all recommended that she rescind the mask.
Publicly and privately, we've had conversations. I've asked her.
Does she not work for you? Does she not work for you?
She falls under state statute.
It's not that black and white.
Does she not work for the board of commissioners? Very simple question.
She does, but she also follows state statute.
If she works for you, and she's an employee, if I, if I go to life, if my boss tells me something, and I don't do it, I don't have a job.
Under state statute, if we have, if you're a building inspector, and you're told by a board to pass a building that isn't qualified, they can actually, he'll win every, all day long in a lawsuit, similar things, and we've seen it happen. If we, if we, we can't do anything to her at this point for following her, the statute.
We actually could potentially take a vote to fire her, but then you're putting the, which I explained earlier, you're putting the county in danger, the residents. If we fire her tonight, then we don't have a doctor in place, and that puts the county at danger. I'm not going to cut my nose off to fight my bitch. I understand that. I'm not saying. We're working on it as fast as we can.
And we appreciate you guys, you must know this, we appreciate you, but.
Let, let us work on it and hold us accountable.
We will.
Yeah, I, I would say this, I mean, I was diagnosed with cancer ten years ago, I was diagnosed with, cut the cancer out. We got a cancer in St. Clair County, and we got our school board who are taking untold godly amounts of millions of dollars, so just expect the schools to, to resist what Merkentant has, is to me, is a, is a dead issue.
It just seems that there's too many pockets, there's money being lined here. I'm telling you, I can see it, I can't prove it, but there's a bug, a bugger in the woodpile somewhere.
Let us work on it, hold us accountable, but we do have, we got a meeting, we got a lot to go, we got three more meetings to go through.
I appreciate you hearing us, though, this is the first exchange we've had, you guys.
You don't exchange, except during the citizens' witch.
We, we got to hear from you guys.
We're trying.
I appreciate you guys. This is important, it's our fave, man. If it's not this mandate, there's going to be a next mandate. And, and I understand that you're frustrated, but we have to follow a process, so that we don't put the entire county at risk. And, and so we've started the process tonight, we, we hear you, and we are going to follow the process. We've got work groups and a committee, we, loud and clear, this, this issue has been heard.
Duke, you ready?
Greg.
Greg.
Oh, Greg. Okay. I'm going to call the Judiciary and Public Safety Committee meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Present.
Commissioner Beeden?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Here.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here. Are there any additions to the agenda, or if not, a motion would be in order?
So moved.
Support.
We have motion to support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any citizens wishing to be heard? Seeing none?
No.
Are there any updates? Any conceptual initiatives?
None.
No old business. We have four items. Item seven A, the contract for part-time arraignment attorney.
Make a motion to send it to the full board?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B and C, safe for final action, but I think we're just going to send them to full board and ask a few questions. This is for the Recovery High School, and this is the second year that we've had the recovery program, and I don't know that we have any students.
If it doesn't, that'd be fine, I'll actually now make a motion to send it to the full board.
Support.
Both or just one of them?
Just item B, Recovery High School.
Thank you.
So we have motion and support is by?
Dave.
Dave, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We now have the contract request for the Roman Group.
Make a motion.
Support.
We have motion to support.
Yes, total final action.
No.
Full board.
Full board.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Contract approval request for Schultz Ventures, this is for a seven-year lease for heated and unheated storage for the drug task force.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Let him say something. Captain Paul, is there something you want to add to that, Captain?
Sure you don't have something to say? We never bring up questions about these. Because if people.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks for coming.
A real poker face map.
We screwed up, we'll take it this time, we'll make sure it's open next time.
We will possibly look at alternate facilities as well. There are issues with our overflow room with the sound quality, and there's nobody down there, there isn't a sergeant-at-arms down there. In the times it was open, we have received a lot of complaints from the citizens that were down there, that they couldn't hear.
Uh, he's going to finish you, he said I was over there.
So, we'll look at either opening up the room or an additional venue that's bigger and can hold everyone.
Actually, maybe a better.
And that would handle the IT issues and.
Yeah, we'll address it. Apologize. Yeah, no, I mean, if we screw it up and then do it, we got to get it straight.
You needed to know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can't fix what we don't know.
Greg, you have a few items left, I believe. Yes, sir.
Yes.
There's no, no, no other judiciary and public safety matters, motion to receive and file packets?
So moved.
Support. Favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, thank you.
Aye.
I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners, Environmental Public Works Committee to order, can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Here.
Commissioner Beeden?
Present.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Vanden Bosch?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here. Um, uh, item number two, addition, deletions, seeing none? Make a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any citizens to be heard in this committee? Seeing none. Any updates from commissioners? Seeing none. Any conceptual initiatives?
None this evening.
None this evening. No old business, uh, new business. Item A, the survey, uh, and remintionation grant for two thousand twenty-two.
Make a motion to send it to the board?
Support. Any questions on the motion? Just one question, really not an emotion, but who's our county surveyor? Was Chuck, oh, wasn't it? But Chuck.
He didn't run.
He didn't.
That's what I thought.
I don't recall, there was somebody that ran, though.
Okay, and it's working out?
Well, we haven't heard differently.
Okay, all right. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number two, the resolution twenty-two dash zero-one, the St. Clair County Master Recreation Plan, twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-six.
Make a motion to send it to the full board?
Support.
All in.
Quickie, I just had a meeting in St. Clair the other day, and they're redoing their master plan form down there. And, um, I know the last time they did it, they were impressed at how thorough it was and mic report, and I know they've done your Riley Township one, and I know they've done a lot of others for other.
They had Grant Township also.
Yeah, really, uh, really solid service.
Marysville's was on the planning commission meeting last night, but I got tied up, I missed that meeting, so, uh, I don't know where it went, but.
What were you doing?
I, I had another meeting, I had.
Did you speak into the mic?
Did we have, uh, Chris, did I take a vote on it?
No vote, but you have support.
Support, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Item C, the, uh, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority.
Make a motion to send it to the full board?
Support.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. A private, a private hangar lease assignment with Spartan Aviation to E something, I don't.
Make a motion and head to the full board?
Support.
Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Smiths Creek's activity, uh, the report?
Make a motion to receive and file?
Support.
Any questions? The, the numbers are good.
I added a lot.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, any other environmental public works matters?
One real quick.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the road commission has been working in Riley Township, and they are doing a fantastic job trimming the trees for the work trucks to go through, and they're taking care of the trees also, not destroying them, just to clean out the road, so they're, it, looking very nice.
Thank you.
Doing a good job.
Uh, any other questions? Motion to receive the monthly park tax?
Support.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to receive and file?
Support.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Support.
I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order, roll call, please.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Present.
Commissioner Beeden?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Vanden Bosch?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here. Seeing no additions or deletion changes, can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Uh, somebody farted all this, I don't know, uh, any citizens to be heard? Seeing none, updates, do we have any updates?
Just a quick little one, um, the ARP final things came out, I just.
Yes, this afternoon.
Yeah, we sent, sent that, I know Carrie had a copy, but James Fried had forwarded to me, and I sent it to the rest of the commissioners, so we kind of get an idea.
I did get a call from Bill Wynn today, I talked to Carrie Heffington, and my six townships in the city of Memphis, she has all their things that they would like to do. Their budget year starts April first, you know, as a township supervisor, I believe your charge of township was the same, but they.
We were a calendar year.
Okay. Uh, all my townships start on April first. They would like to have, potentially, if everything is approved, have these funds delivered to them, so they include it on their budget, that has to be approved in March.
We, do we give them funds before they spend it?
No, but the promise of.
What?
The promise of funds or the actual funds?
Promise.
However the process works.
Yeah, we, we could have an agreement, but we are looking to do these on a reimbursement basis, as they spend the money, so we can verify that it's spent the way they said.
And you talk, so.
Guaranteed to come.
Get some verification, so we can forward that.
Weren't we going to get together and have some kind of talk on how or when we could spend the money, Carrie?
Whenever you want to.
Yeah, I think we're waiting, though, for this final, uh, final rule.
Yep, the final rule to come out, just to see.
Okay.
If there's any changes, there were some changes, um, that added more flexibility.
Oh, good.
And my son's a treasurer in Riley, uh, he is very involved, and a lot of people are calling him from other townships with the AARP, ARPA funds. Uh, the Clearwater Act allows you to do just about anything in regards to cleaning out ditches, and they have a failed culvert in Riley, I know, a maiming, and I think that's on the list to get replaced.
Oh, good.
Because that road will be closed for traffic if we don't do that, which would affect emergency. All right, uh, any conceptual initiatives?
None this evening.
No old business, we'll move to seven A, uh, IT and planning manning table change.
I'd move to send it to the full board?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Seven B, contract approval request, city of Port Huron for internet service.
Make a motion to send it to the full board?
Support. Is that where we get our internet service from now? We give it to them.
We give it to them.
Or that's what I mean.
Or sell it to them.
That's what I mean.
All right, now, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Seven C, medical examiners, Michigan Forensics, P L L C addendum number one.
Make a motion to send that to the full board?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. At this time, do we have any other Ways and Means matters? Seeing none.
I'll make a motion to receive and file?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?[1547.85]